Good evening and welcome to the City of East Providence City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 16th. May all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. J.L., would you like to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Council President, before we get started, I'd just like to move to seal the minutes from executive session.
Okay, we have a motion to seal the minutes in executive session from Councilman Cahoon. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Mr. President, second.
We have a second by Councilman Rodrick.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye.
First item, please.
Approval of consent calendar. The only, there's actually one change, that would be item B, that's already been, it's already been approved and taken care of.
I'm sorry?
The item, for item B.
Okay, so that's going to be all, okay.
May, I just, one note, Madam Clerk, if I may, for the minutes, I think Jen Griffith's name is just spelled incorrectly, is there any way we could just fix that?
Absolutely.
Another way.
So if we can, we can make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the amendments to spell, the correct spelling of the last name of Ms. Griffith.
Absolutely, okay.
So moved, Ms. President.
Would anyone?
Second with the changes.
Okay, we have a second with the changes. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Licenses not requiring public hearing for the vote. We are going to skip over, I'm actually, because that was previously, that was previously approved.
Okay.
Aim Fitness, also known as TNC Athletic LLC, 1033 Waterman Avenue, 02914, Thomas O'Brien.
Is the applicant, is the applicant here?
He is not, but I'm here representing him.
Okay, you can step right up to the podium, put sir.
Just pass it, just pass A, pass A, pass it off the calendar.
We're just moving to B.
Right after this, okay.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Attorney David Dalbash, I'm representing Aim Fitness, AKA TNC Athletic LLC. This is a business that's a private gym, by appointment only. As a matter of, of just being assured that we don't fall in violation of the law, if there would ever be any situation in which that operation would have happened during a holiday, we don't want to be in violation with the, with the city council. So as a matter of, of just making sure we're covering our, crossing our t's and dotting our i's, we want to make sure that all the, all the licenses are done in order.
Okay. Madam Clerk, we have any questions or concerns regarding the license or any paperwork that's outstanding at this point in time?
No, nothing at all, everything's been completed, thank you.
Okay, so they're up to date with everything.
What's the hours of operation?
The hours are private, in the sense that it's not open to the public, it's only by appointment. More likely than not, the situation or chances that be open on holidays would, would be rare at the best. So, there isn't a set nine to five situation, it's, it's when the, when the situation would arise as far as private training, usually on the, on the calendar schedule of the participants and the trainees.
Does this gym have a website at the public?
Not that I know of yet.
So when you say, when you say private, are you referring to, you just set up an appointment and it'll be private training, you just can't come off the sidewalk?
Yes, Mr. President, that's exactly, it's not, it's not as if a private club, it's a private membership, only by appointment.
Okay. Would anybody else have any further questions at this point in time for the applicant? With that being said, it's not for a vote?
They are for a vote.
Oh, for a vote, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Cahoon, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
With that being said, we're going to move on to item C. Item A was already passed a couple of council meetings, so we're going to bypass that and move right on to item C.
Phantom Fireworks Eastern Region LLC, 141 Newport Avenue, 02916, Joshua Nielsen.
Is Mr. Nielsen here, or representative for Phantom Fireworks? No one here. Madam Clerk, do they have all their paperwork in place?
They do have all their paperwork in place, this is one that's only a 60-day license, so, and we'll talk, that'll be the next item, but there is a, there's an expiration of just a couple months.
And where is this located, Newport Avenue? And I know they'll come in front of the council for other locations that they, as they have done in the past as well, not on the Newport Avenue, but I think they do one on, like they have a tent set up on Pawtucket Avenue as well, if I'm not mistaken.
I want to say the 141 Newport Avenue may be the old Uncle Tony's building.
Okay.
I think that's where it's going to be.
Any, any questions?
Mr. President, what are the days that they're requesting, what months?
There are actually 60, the way the license works is, it's 60 days from today, for the Hawker's license and the holiday sales. They ask for 60 days from the time, the day that it's approved.
Are they in a building, or I heard something about a tent?
I know they had set that up before as a tent, they just set a tent up and they'd set up a table.
And sell fireworks.
Sell them right from the table, yes. 60 days, I mean, that, this is for, I take it for the 4th of July, I would think.
I have one question.
It won't take them to that time, will they need to come back in?
They would need to.
So does it make sense to even have?
The license ending date if approved would be for the Hawker license, which is also including holiday sales, is June 15th, 2019.
Mr. President, if I may, I have a question.
Please.
Would it be possible, from the police department, to know if there has been any, any issues in the past with this business, or others that come forward for Hawker's license, for fireworks sales? Because the reason why I'm asking, because sometimes they'll sell illegal fireworks, anything that's airborne is illegal and stuff like that, any complaints from the fire, the police department, maybe even the fire department, you know, in the past?
I know in the past that the chief or someone from the police department has spoken on behalf of these things, I don't know how that's going to work now, with some changes, but, I mean, we can also defer this to the next meeting, considering that he's looking for 60 days, his license expires on June 14th, June 15th, if I'm not mistaken. And with that being said, I mean, either we could, we can have someone or representative or someone come up and talk to us about, if there's any questions or concerns with respect to that, but.
Mr. President, if I may, and I kind of share Mr. Morato's concern, and you know, in my runs around the city, I've seen a lot of these tents set up, and I've often wondered when there's no one there, like, that probably isn't a great idea from a security perspective. So, I mean, at very least, I think I'd like to hear something from the police department and/or the fire department, you know, are there additional measures that are taken in case somebody goes in there and lights a match? You know, are there additional security measures that have to be taken to safeguard these temporary facilities? I think under Charter 2-9-8, council, council of the mayor may require an inspection, investigation, and report by any department on any license or application for a license. So I think that's what I'm looking for from the police and/or fire department with regard to this license application.
Just to add, just to add to it also, it does say the hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on the license, and the applicant does live out of state. That helps, so.
Mr. President, I think, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I agree with Councilman Cahoon, Councilman Morato, all of us, I think that if they're looking more for the July holiday period, then there's no rush tonight in April, if they only have, is it 60 or 90 days?
60 days.
60 days. And we, I'd like to hear something from the police department also, so I would move to defer this to the next meeting and request that police chief either send a report or come in to answer some questions.
Okay, so we, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Councilman, okay, so we have a motion on the floor to defer this to the next meeting with, with the expect, expectation of receiving some additional information on this.
If I may, may I just, I would, if possible, if you would amend your motion, I'd like to point out that that motion is in accordance with that particular section of the Charter 2-9-8, and that's what we're asking for information under, so, if you would amend your motion.
Sure, I agree, I would amend my motion to include the charter provision that applies. What was the number?
2-9, paragraph eight.
That number.
That number.
Yeah. That always works. Okay, so we have a motion.
Then I'll second.
And we have a second on that motion. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is application for Hawker license, but Solicitor, Mr. Marcello, do we need to do a separate vote for that one, for the Hawker, the 60-day license?
Separate item, I would think.
Separate item.
Separate, okay.
So Councilman, considering that you had a motion on the floor for item C, would you like to make the same out?
This is the same company, so I would then also make the same exact motion for item C, for Phantom Fireworks Eastern Region LLC request, and along with the provisions in the Charter, and that this be put on the next agenda as well.
Thank you. So we have, we have a motion, Councilman Rodrick, seconded by Councilman Cahoon, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Licenses requiring public hearing for the vote. This one will.
Considering that this item has been already approved in previous council meeting, I'd like to move right on to the next item, please.
Public comment.
Well, she's looking for that, Councilman Morato, would you like to get up and do a little tap dance, sing for us while we're waiting on this?
Anything, anything?
Anything.
Nothing.
Nothing, yeah, nothing?
No, there was, it was signed up, yeah. Do we have a riddle that you'd like to present? Oh my gosh, you guys are great.
Anyone here sign up for public sign, public comment?
Yes.
Would you like to step up to the podium, sir?
Yeah, well, that's the problem we're having right now, so, do you like to stand up to the podium?
I apologize. This is Ken Goucher, 291 Brown Street, and the docket item topic is East Providence Senior Center.
Hi, I'm Ken Goucher from 291 Brown Street, and I have over 400 signatures here that they do not want children in the senior center, and I don't know how that got voted on. Does the council vote on that when the mayor put that up for agenda?
No, it's not a vote for the council, sir.
Why isn't it? It should be a vote for the City of East Providence.
It's an administrative move, that's why.
Well, first off, you're making a big mistake. You discussed a restaurant the last time I was here, you didn't even ask me a question about it. Now I have 400 signatures, now I got questions for you people. You just told me you didn't vote on it, that's wrong. Do we still get money from the government, grants and everything, because this is going to be a playroom for kids? Is it legal? Did you go, you're the lawyer, did you go before the government and say, can we do this?
Sir, the reason, the reason why we didn't answer your question last time, because you came up in public comment, and there's usually no dialogue.
Oh, excuse me, sir, when a restaurant come up, they had, you actually get in a discussion about the El Maraki Restaurant, then you get into discussion about?
I was under a different heading, that's why.
Well, I can't have a discussion with the council, because this is more important than a restaurant. Well, you know, your mothers and fathers might be going to this senior center, and it's going to be babysitting, seriously, they get out of school at 2:00 o'clock, they're going to go there. I was told there's 15 children that go to Riverside, there'll be 200 once the high school gets out, they'll be there all summer long, but no one seems to, you know, what is this, why are you throwing the seniors out? I got other questions. What happens when there's drugs out in the parking lot, or bringing in the building? Kids are going to get into this. The mayor said this is good for the kids, what about the seniors, that it's good for us? I'm 80 years old, I don't want to babysit somebody else's children. And when are we going to vote? Now you've got other schools that are closing, why can't those kids go to those other schools, whether it's gyms and all the facilities anyways? But this is what happens, you people don't discuss the important things, but a restaurant is more important.
Well, sir, I'm not disputing how you feel about this, and I know there are some angry people regarding this matter here, however, that's not.
Yeah, they all signed this court.
And probably more.
Yes.
However, however, that wasn't the decision at the, for the council to make, and it was administrative.
You let one man run the show, a mayor.
Well, from the administrative perspective, yes, that's what he does, but there is a representative here from the mayor's office, if you want to take a side, that you could speak to.
No, I want to talk to you people, all of you.
Oh, okay.
And the reason I'm talking to all of you people, is because you didn't vote on this, you just said, okay, the mayor, is he a dictator that he can run the show? He can just say, I'm the mayor, and this is the way it's going to be? He was a policeman, that's the way it was going to be, he told you what to do, and you did it. Now it sounds like the council did the same thing.
No, again, the council had no bearing on this decision.
Why?
And was that?
Why?
Because, again, it's an administrative, it was an administrative decision that the council is not allowed to get involved with.
Why did we vote you in? All of you, why were you voted in? Because you're supposed to represent the citizens of East Providence, not the kids. We voted you people in. Of course, I didn't vote for the mayor, and I told him right to his face, because he's making a mistake. See, no discussion.
So can I, can I just make a recommendation, sir, and I know you've been up here a couple of times, and I feel awful that we're not able to have a good, full, vibrant discussion, which we should, because I think this is a very important topic, as you mentioned, and I'm sure other council members feel the same way, can we put it on the communication portion of our docket?
I want it on a vote.
Well, we can start with the communication, to be able to have a good dialogue, right, a good discussion about it, would be on that section of our docket.
It's too late. He's going to bring this in next month, which is May. Now, he's just going to jump on this, and then, and next month, or maybe a little later, because there has to be work done on the senior center to let these kids in, also, he's trying to save money, he's going to spend money to bring the kids in. Now, to me, this is double jeopardy, really. You're taking the children and putting them with seniors? We can get along with children, can they get along with us? That's the big problem. You've got people with walkers that'll probably be knocked off the walker, because some kid wants to get in the building, and we're in the way, as we're old. I think this should be stopped right now, and go for vote before the city, the whole city, not just you five members or a mayor, who dictated to you five members. Anyways, I guess the restaurant is more important than your mother's father's going to a senior center.
I disagree.
Yeah, I, I don't understand, there was, I had no discussion about a restaurant, what restaurant? There was no discussion, that was a.
If you discussed it, you were.
The last meeting.
I'll go back to the podium. You stood right here and asked questions about the El Maraki Restaurant, and they had a lawyer here, I was here, listen.
It was listed as a public hearing, sir, that's the only reason why.
Well, this is a public hearing. I'm here because it's a public hearing, not many people show up. You know why? Because I guess the council's useless. Go against the mayor, challenge this, instead of just, oh, this is cut and dried, that's what he told us. He went over there, and I had the place packed, standing room only, and he said the same thing over and over again, it's good for the kids. Nothing was said about seniors. Oh, we're going to like it. We don't like it.
My only suggestion to you at this point in time, and not that we get involved with his decisions as far as administrative, no different than he can get involved with legislative decisions that we make up here, is that, again, there is a, there is a representative here from the mayor's office, that if you choose or wish to speak to him, although you have spoke to the mayor about it before, you can do that. If you want to talk to me afterwards about it, and we can go into further.
I went through this with Tommy Rhodes, wanted to talk to me after, people never called. I never done anything, Mr. President, why is the mayor here?
Again, that's, again, that's his choice, I don't, I'm not going to sit here and, and I can't answer that question, to be quite honest with you, I really can't.
Bring it up to him and put it up to the city and vote, in November.
Well, thank you for expressing your concerns.
I got to honor you.
Next item, please.
We are, that completes public comment, the next is council member communication. Item A, discussion only, Bristol County Water Authority updates, Council Vice President Rodrick.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. President, as I said at the last meeting, I think we need to keep this in the forefront and start to schedule the, the hearings that we need, and lo and behold, after that meeting, we had the problem where there was a leak in the Bristol County Water System. I hope by now our residents know this was not a leak in East Providence, was not a problem with our system, but we have a backup for Barrington Water in Bristol, just like their system is a backup for us. And this problem could be, could happen to us, and most likely will happen to us if we don't do anything pretty soon. So I think that we, we need to talk about, maybe even for our next council meeting, scheduling the, the matter as, as a public hearing, start the ball rolling, and talk a little bit to the solicitor, I don't know if you have a.
I do.
Thought on that.
I do have a, a report for you. As you know, you, at the last meeting, you asked me to contact Bristol County Water, and I did contact them through Steve Kudus. Unfortunately, Steve, Mr. Kudus was out last week because of a death in his family.
Yes.
But today, he did get back to me, and the Bristol County Water representatives are available on 4/23 or 4/24 for a special council meeting, if that's what you want, want to do, so I just need to.
Would, would this also be inclusive to the four options that was presented to us during the workshop?
On the, on the rates, sewer rate's different.
Right, I know there's two separate issues.
It's up to the council, my recommendation would, would be to separate those two issues. And, but, so I did not, we're also trying to get him to get us some dates where he can present the, the different rate structures, but Bristol County Water is available on either next Tuesday or next Wednesday, and we just have to comply with the 48-hour posting requirement, so it's up to the councils as to when they.
Next, next Tuesday may be a school committee meeting here, so that's not a good night, and I think we need the chambers, we don't want to go up to the third floor.
So 4/24, do you think?
So probably 4/24 would be the.
Is there something scheduled for 4/24? I thought that was the evening when, when the mayor was meeting with Mayor Alurza with regard to the.
I can let you know that right now.
Henderson Bridge.
I believe that was.
That is, that's correct, at 7:00 p.m.
Here?
That's correct. No, that's at the Riviera.
At 7:00.
Oh, that's nice.
24th likely won't work.
Those are the only two dates that the Bristol County Water gave me for their availability, I can ask for the next week after that. I, it's up to you.
Do we need the mayor here for this, or spectral council meeting at all?
I don't believe you do, it's up to you, again, this is a.
I mean, that's a good day for me.
It's a good day for me, too.
The 24th.
It is a public hearing, it's really just for you to get public feedback as to what the different roots and problems with those roots are. Mr. Kudus certainly will be there to answer questions as to what his recommendations will be.
Mr. Kudus, Mr. Marvo could probably be here, and then we have a consultant at the city.
That's for the sewer rate.
That's, oh, he's not involved in this.
So this is just the Bristol County Water Authority, with respect to, now, during that time, are we presenting, are we going to be sitting up here as well?
I would notice that as a work session, so the council can act as a council and take public comment as a council, as a public workshop. No votes will be taken, but it will be a public workshop.
Mr. President, I, I think it's important that we move quickly, public needs to know that if our one water supply goes down, you turn your fortunes, we have no water in the city. So it's not anything I want to wait for, I'd like to see the mayor come, but it's not really his, you know, the Bristol County Water Authority has all the information, and Henderson Bridge project's important also, so maybe after that, then he could join us.
Yeah, to the extent that the, that easement is necessary from the city, that would be granted by the city council anyway, so as you know, one of the options was over city property, so the mayor has no really role in granting an easement, only the city council can do that, so.
Right.
He may, and of course, I think he'd be well represented by Mr. Kudus being there anyway.
Yes.
But that's up to you.
Well.
It's a public hearing, so.
Is he going to be, is, is the director of public works going to be attending this meeting over on the 24th, for the Henderson Bridge?
Yet, oh, that I, that I don't know, good question, I don't know that.
Because I would think it makes sense, so in, in event that that happens, then he's not going to be here.
Correct. How about I confer, is it, is, do you prefer the 24th, assuming that Mr. Kudus can be in attendance? And let me confer with the city clerk.
Unless, unless we go somewhere else on the 23rd, the school committee will be here, we could hold it at a school auditorium.
We could hold it anywhere, as long as it's a notice, 40 hours.
Right, as long as we notice it. I don't think we should hold it here, the third floor is not conducive to a public hearing if a lot of people come, it's, there is an elevator, but.
May I just ask that we do it at 7:00 o'clock or afterwards, whenever we choose, because I can't, I can't be available for that.
Right. I mean, there's the Martin Auditorium, which is a reasonable size, the high school's probably too large, and there may be something going on there, but now we would have to call and see if it's available, so I'm sure it would be barring any concert or something, that I don't think there. Is, is there someone else besides Mr. Kudus, from that department, that can answer those questions for us?
I don't believe so. As a backup? I don't believe so. I, I don't, I can't speak for him, I don't know.
The water superintendent wouldn't be?
He, he was at one of the meetings, yes. He might be available, I, I don't know.
We're going to have a presentation, as we saw last time, so.
It'll be the same exact presentation, I assume.
We make a motion to have the meeting on that date, the 24th, it seems to work for everyone, at 7:00.
Subject to the availability of Mr. Kudus, Mr. the, the director of public, the water works, right?
So, and then, in addition to that, if he is not available, do we want to do it for the 23rd at Martin Middle School, if available?
Sure.
Just for a second option?
We definitely, we definitely need Mr. Kudus.
Yeah.
Here, we can't have this without DPW head, and.
All right, that's a good call, Fred. Yeah, Fred just reminds me, the school committee hasn't been using their second date, so maybe we can just double check with them, the council chambers might be, okay.
That would be 4/24. That would be 4/24. That would be 4/24.
4/23.
4/23 would be the school committee meeting day.
So why don't, Mr. Solicitor, maybe you could check on, on that. And we could leave it either date. We could vote to authorize you if the 23rd is available, if the school committee's not here, to go forward with that.
That's fine. I'll work with the city clerk. We'll.
Work with the clerk, right. And then just let us know. We seem to be available either day. And, but at 7:00, not 6:00 or 6:30.
Okay.
So I would make that as a form of a motion that the city solicitor work with the city clerk to check availability on both the 23rd and the 24th for this public hearing. And be authorized to schedule either day that works at 7:00 p.m. And then let us know, and it would be advertised publicly, of course. I'll make that as a motion.
Do we need to vote on it? It's not out for a vote, right?
I mean, if you don't need it, then.
Okay, all right.
Scheduling does not require.
Okay, sure. All right. All set with that, councilman?
All set, thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Discussion only. Feedback from Discussion with Citizens Bank regarding the closing of the Kent Heights branch. Councilman Cahoon.
This is quick. They reached out to me like any other resident in business and said, hey, our road and parking lot is in bad shape. Can you take a look? And I said I would. And by the way, you know, we kind of miss our Kent Heights branch. Can you tell us what went on there? And I spoke with a nice man named, I think his name is Jared Wallace. Anyway, what Jared informed me was, it had nothing to do with the city of East Providence. It was entirely a corporate decision. He explained to me that there's something with regard to, that Citizens Bank Corporate calls the Rhode Island Effect. Much like Dunkin' Donuts, there are many more Citizens branches per person in Rhode Island than there are in any of their other, I think he said, 11 states. So when corporate starts to look at the decline and the number of folks that are actually coming into branches, they make a decision on which ones to close. The Kent Heights branch seemed like a decent choice, even though it was still pretty busy and popular because it's right in the middle of a bunch of other branches. So I just ask it, you know, we may, we keep in touch, you know, certainly, you know, they indicated that they're going to remain partners in with East Providence for the considerable future. You know, if there's ever a chance that they could come back to the Kent Heights area again, you know, we're certainly listening. So that's, that's that.
Thank you, councilman. Next item, please.
Discussion only. Ward 4, community meeting update. Councilman Morado.
I just, I'll be real quick. I just want to thank, we had a, I had my first community meeting back on April 4th. At the Riverside Library was a pretty good success. We had over, about 60 residents that attended. I hope it becomes a quarterly meeting. I want to thank Councilman Rodricks for also attending and answering questions, concerns, inhering ideas, and anything the public had to propose that night. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Next item, please.
Discussion only. Christmas tree lighting power drop for the Riverside Annual Lighting. Councilman Morado.
Excuse me, I think we pass skip one.
I apologize. De, discussion only. Grassy Plain Park. Councilman Morado.
So I had met with the members, I had met with residents around the Grassy Plain Park area back in January and expressed some of their concerns. Grassy Plain Park is a 12-acre park that's being underutilized right now. It really is kind of a mess and a little bit neglect. And out of the results, I had to forward the, some of the concerns to DPW Director, the mayor's office, and the police department because of the concerns of juveniles hanging out at night. But out of this community meeting, they, we once again touched upon Grassy Plain Park. And the following day, myself, Mr. Rodricks, Steve Kudus, and the mayor all met with three of, I say five residents. And we walked the park and looked at, visually looked at some of their concerns and what can we do in the immediate future to, you know, get rid of some of those hazards, such as broken concrete and divots in the, in the grass and stuff like that. So I want to thank the mayor's office and Steve Kudus, the residents, and Bob Rodricks for attending that meeting.
Thank you, councilman.
Mr. President, just to add, I want to thank Councilman Morado. This is a large parcel of land that is for no, no negative reason, has just been left alone for years. I'm very familiar with it. Right out of high school, I was a councilor there. We used to have a couple hundred kids a day coming to that playground. And it's a beautiful resource for the city that sits there now, just kind of getting grown over. So I would thank the Riverside Councilmen for getting the neighbors involved. They seem to be happy. Of course, there are always a couple that don't want to see anything there. They just want to leave it alone. But the few that came out said they were, they were very glad to see that for the first time in several years, there was some attention coming their way from city leaders. So thank you for that initiative, and I look forward to continuing with that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Discussion only. Christmas tree lighting power drop for the Riverside Annual Lighting. Councilman Morado.
So our Riverside Annual Christmas Tree Lighting has grown every year. And we've been currently having a Christmas tree lighting in the backyard of Borealis Coffee Shop. And last year it was just standing room only, inside and out. So we want to make it more of a community lighting for the, for the square. So what I'm proposing in conjunction with the Riverside Renaissance is moving that Christmas tree lighting outside the gate between the bike path and the grassy area, between the bike path and that little portion of Pawtucket Avenue. So I've been in touch with the state DOT and Steve Kudus today. Actually, Bob Rodricks and I met him on site to do a power drop so we could power that light. I don't, my hope is that it happens this year with the anticipation of having a bigger crowd than we did, well, we did last year.
Thank you, councilman. Next item, please.
Discussion only. State Street Culvert Project Start Date. Councilwoman Souza.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So unfortunately, the Public Works Director, who would be the one to be answering some of my questions, isn't able to be present today. So this is on the agenda again. We're coming around season where construction begins throughout the community, whether it's roadwork or other projects throughout the state and city. This has been a project that I have been kind of full force since 2017, working very diligently with the administration, going over many hurdles, ready roadblocks, a lot of it miscommunication or lack thereof. One of the things, so last, last fall, the project was supposed to begin, and it fell short because, again, of lack of communication. But we did end up getting all of our permits from RIDOT, RIDEM, Seacon Conservation Committee, the city of, the town of Seacon signed off on all the permitting and easements that we needed. So there is no reason why this year provided the water table drops. We have had a lot of significant rain this fall and winter season. We continue to have more rain this spring. So I would imagine that that would be an issue. We need the water level to be at a certain measurement for them to start construction. Lynch is already on board. The city and the state have already allocated the funds for this project. So over a half a million dollars has been set aside and allocated for this project, which was grant funded. My concern is any roadblocks that are unforeseeable, did somebody lose, you know, because there's always seems to be something when it's time to start a project of this magnitude in the city. And that area of the city has been really detrimental over the course of the years with all the flooding. And we've tried to remediate a lot of it over the last couple of years with very little success. I mean, those culverts are really very important to get in as soon as possible to provide the relief that that community neighborhood needs. The, so I'm looking at the next council meeting, I'm going to have this on the docket again, please. For the next council meeting, I want to know what the start date is with Lynch, if they have been contacted, if the, if we have. I want to make sure that all the papers and documents for the permitting is in hand and that we don't need to follow up if something's expired. I want to get this ball running and be ahead of it before we start playing games like last year where there was a circle trying to chase the documents we needed to get done. The second part of this that I'm putting into the lap of the administration, the mayor's office, is in 2017, the city has contracted with GZA and Solitude Lake Management to treat the invasive species that line the Ten Mile Runs River in that area that is actually putting a chokehold and keeping that water table high because it's so overgrown and has been neglected for very decades. They did start the process with herbicide treatments that 2017, and we had contracted for subsequent years. So 2018, there was supposed to be treatments done. We had had significant meetings in regards to what the plan was going to be. So they understood what the community in that area and myself were looking for. So digging out, not just killing the species, but you had to dig out all of that dead debris to give way for the water to move down. I tried to get information in 2018 about any work being done. That was never provided. So I'm going to say that it never was done because if it wasn't provided, it wasn't documented, in my eyes, it was never done. So I don't know where the shortcomings came there. And I know in 2019, which is where we are now, we're still contracted, again, for additional herbicide treatments and widening of the banks and cleaning out dredging of that area. I am more than happy to sit down with the mayor's office and his aides to go over in detail the process and what we've been, what, all the work that I've done for the last two years and all the documentations, along with the DPW Director, who also has that information. Again, that has been something that has been overlooked and put to the side for year after year. And I think, like anything else, when we neglect an area, there are severe consequences to that. So moving forward, I'd like, you know, Mark, if we can set up a meeting to go over that and have this on the docket for an update, so that the public and the residents in State Street know that we are getting it done. It is going, it is on the top of the priority list yet again, one more year. And I know the mayor has mentioned that that is a priority for him, too, having been down there and seen firsthand what those, those neighbors are suffering. So that's all I have to say about that.
No, thank you, Councilwoman. This is a project that's long overdue. Next item, please.
Discussion only. Street sweeping schedule and routes. Councilwoman Souza.
So I have this on the docket today because of some outreach from constituents in WARD 2 regarding street sweeping and when they were going to be taking place. And I noticed that once I put that out there into the administration, they were kind enough to put up on the city Facebook or social media, a list of what the current street sweepings were. So that went up, I don't know, on the 13th or 12th. And they had started, the assignment started April 3rd to the 17th. So the list that they provided was for that two-week period of street cleaning. I guess they're starting on the north end, which was reversed from the year before. So I appreciate the speedy information from the administration office regarding that. I do, however, want a little bit more detail. So I know last year, the city, the DPW Department asked in the capital budget for a new machine. So I believe we have two machines now out, a newer one and an older one on the street. My request or anticipation for the public being transparent and keeping them involved so that they know if people are working hard, which I believe they are in the city, the people should know about it, the public should be aware. So what are the anticipated streets moving forward? So please don't, you know, take this the wrong way, but don't give it to me at the fourth quarter. I'd like to know it in advance. And I'm sure that the department has it strategically mapped out the way they plan to do it for the season. So the residents should be aware or able to see that, too. In multiple reasons, I have people who, the street sweepers came by and their cars were parked in the street. And had they known that that day or that timeframe that they were going to be there, they would have moved their vehicles so that the street could have been cleaned appropriately. So there are various concerns of that nature that have been brought up. So I think it's important that we know, or if you don't, you know, the city doesn't want to put, you know, or doesn't have a chance to put it out on the social media, please provide me via email with the list. So that way I can inform my constituents and put it up on my own page for the residents of WARD 2, or the rest of the city for that matter, to be aware of what's going on in terms of the schedule and routes.
Mr. President.
Please.
Councilwoman, I know when I visit a relative in another city, one of the things they do is they have temporary signs that they put up three or four days in advance to let residents know, street sweeping will occur on such and such a day between these hours, no parking. And then they remove the signs. And in one case, they have permanent signs up. There's a season. And they pick certain streets and they say, street sweeping will occur on every Thursday of the month or whatever it is. And they do it that way, too. So it might be something we can talk to Mr. Kudus about. I would think to start with the temporary signage anyway.
Right.
And get the word out to people.
Right. So it's, you know, WARD 2 is a highly dense populated part of the city. And there's a lot of businesses and a lot of foot traffic. So, you know, there's a lot more trash, unfortunately, that accumulates in this part of the city and primarily in the downtown Main Street areas. So it is important, right, that our appearance to the community and to those coming into the community is that of a clean city. And not that we're not, but people would like to know and be aware of that, especially now leaving the end of the winter where all the salt, maybe leftover fall debris is around. I do want to mention that I did get an update, especially for the State Street area, that the waste, the water basins, the catch basins were washed out and cleaned out. So that way we could get good flow from when the rainwater comes down, because that's also an issue, right? The catch basins get piled up with leaves and sand and debris, and then the flow gets backed up. And that's just an additional problem that we see in that area. So I think that's a great idea. I think I've seen that in a couple of spots, too. Same thing with Pigeon underneath the bridge. There's New York, which is heavily populated and has thousands and thousands of pigeons. They do a phenomenal job at keeping things clean underneath their overpasses and bridges. And I think that we should look into doing something that will also promote that in our community, too, for not only aesthetic looking, but for health, health reasons, because that is very toxic.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next item, please.
Discussion only. Pending handicap parking spots in WARD 2. Councilwoman Souza.
So I just want to apologize to the residents in regards to the handicap parking. So this is not meant to be on the docket as a discussion on handicap under the city ordinance. Those requesting a handicap sign at their residence, they fill out paper, application, it gets submitted to the city clerk, it then goes, gets reviewed by the DPW Director, and then comes before the city council, which was the process in which it took place. The forms are filled out. It was provided to the clerk's office. To the best of my knowledge, the DPW Director did look at it, did say it was fine and approved it, and why, for whatever reason, it has not gotten back onto the docket. Maybe a bit of miscommunication or an oversight. Nonetheless, if, Madam Clerk, if we could have that for a vote, maybe even on the special hearing, can we apply that to the special hearing meeting next week? A quick confirmation from the council just to approve those two handicap spots. These residents have been waiting well over a month for this. And anybody who has handicap plates as, or has a loved one who is handicapped, you can imagine how important it is to be able to have access to your home where you're not going down the street, in front of your house, so you can get in and out safely, or have a van or transportation be able to pick you up or drop you off in a safe manner. So I'd appreciate that.
We'll get it on the next docket. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Discussion only. Department heads to assist with information pertaining to docket items at city council meetings. Councilman Morado.
So I put this on a docket because I have a concern, it's a growing concern, especially with the last council meeting, when council members requested department heads, specific department heads, not all of them, to be here at council meeting to ask, answer questions so we can work through some of the issues. And for whatever reason, they just didn't show. So if you just bear with me, I just want to read this brief statement that I've prepared. I am requesting that department heads attend council meetings when an item for discussion is on the docket pertaining to that department. I believe that this is a necessary, this is necessary in order for us as a council to effectively carry out our functions as described in the charter. This is not a provision section 2-10 issue, as I had mentioned in the past, where the council is given orders to department heads or any subordinates of the mayor, or to where he, we are speaking directly or to undermine the administrative side of government. We need to be able to ask questions while we are working through issues and/or ordinances. For example, at a second passage of a stop sign ordinance, where we have a public hearing, a resident may raise concerns that the council will want to address that evening. In this example, we would need Steve Kudus to come forward and respond to our questions based on the concerns raised by the public at the public hearing. Currently, the way it's being done, we would have to forward those questions through the chain, back up the chain to council, and then perhaps ask that resident, can you come back at the next meeting? And maybe then we'll have an answer for you. And then prolong that process for a second passage. If we do not have department heads present for reasons and examples I stated, it will be necessary to postpone matters, and this undermines our ability to carry out our inherent legislative role and effectively serve the public. This purposely stifles the legislative process. There is to be no interference with the council and city employees. This should be reciprocal. The administration should also not interfere with the legislative body. We are autonomous. It's about checks and balances. We are not asking to berate department heads or have every department head attend meetings as in the past. We are asking department head, the department head, with answers pertaining to a discussion and/or ordinance, et cetera, to attend the meeting, to which that item for discussion. et cetera, to attend the meeting, to which that item for discussion is on the docket, because I consider that, I consider them to be experts in that subject matter. I do like the idea of having questions sent through Mark Fataro, to the mayor, and then through the mayor, to the department heads, that he deems appropriate to answer the questions or questions pertaining to an issue and/or an ordinance ahead of time. That just affords us, you know, when they come before us, maybe they'll have more information that we didn't think of. It gets the process going a little bit quicker and a little bit further, and further educates the public and the council on that subject matter. This gives you opportunity for more information and accuracy. However, I believe that questions should be asked in public to maintain transparency and not to possibly violate the Open Meetings Act. I am requesting a legal memo outlining the powers and authority of the council, including but not limited to the powers outlined in section 2-9 of the charter. And I'm making a formal request because, and that concludes my statement, but I just want to add that, the way this is going right now, it's not going to work in the next four years. Now, us having to send questions up the chain, get the questions in response, and then ask more questions, send that back up the chain. My question will be in another example, what happens during budget time? Are we going to be fortunate enough to have the finance director to answer our questions? Or do we pick and choose which department heads we want to have the council look at or, you know, answer to our questions and concerns?
Well, Councilman Morato, we do have Mark Fataro, representative from the mayor's office, here that perhaps could address some of these concerns that council members have regarding, and with respect to, more importantly, council, excuse me, department heads attending for specific reasons, specific reasons only, as the councilman said, not for every meeting, all meetings, but for specific reasons. Would you like to address that, please?
Sure. So first off, on behalf of the mayor's office, I want to apologize for any confusion that's been going on. When it relates to department heads, I know that there's been some different interpretations of 2-10 and 2-9 relating to the council's powers of inquiry. And I know that our solicitor wrote a memo relating to what he interpreted as the power to summon department heads by the council, whether or not they did have that power. He concluded that they didn't. However, there are certain circumstances outlined in the charter, such as subpoena situations where they do. However, the position of the mayor's office isn't necessarily that we want to stonewall or anything like that, or not to allow department heads to appear. It's just simply that now we have a very clear separation of powers between the legislative branch and the executive branch, and the department heads, with the exception of the city clerk, fall under the executive branch. in 2-9, under powers, so it states that the council has the power to inquire into the conduct of any office, department, or agency of the city, and to make investigation as to municipal affairs, and for such purposes, council may subpoena, blah, blah, blah. But that's all prefaced under the introduction of the powers, which is that they're legislative. So the position of the mayor's office is that department heads will always be available for purposes of inquiry relating to legislative matters. So if it's for an ordinance that any of you wanted someone to give you more information on, to speak on behalf of its first passage, second passage, a department head can be there for that. Or for the budget, we fully intend to have not only our finance director present for the budget, but also every single department head present for each department that we go over for the budget. In addition to that, we do admit that the council has a right to know and be informed of day-to-day matters, and that can go through the mayor's office. So that would just be either, as Councilman Morato said, through emailing, phone calls, we can set up an appointment, one-on-one, you can spend as much time as you want. Department heads and the mayor or myself, we're more than happy to work around your schedules, sit down. Street sweeping, whatever you want to talk about, they're happy to sit down and talk about it. Any follow-up information that you want, we are happy to provide. The only problem, this, with this new form of government, this council and this mayor have an excellent working relationship, and I think we all can agree on that. However, past councils have not, and we are setting, we're the first for a new form of government. We're setting precedence with everything that we do.
Mr. Stark, can I interrupt you for one second? I don't want to lose my train of thought here. How can I work through an issue before first passage when I can't even ask the questions needed for that ordinance change or tweaking of an ordinance? Okay? And I appreciate that you admit that we have certain rights. I really appreciate that. Thank you. But how can we do that? We're not here to berate department heads. We don't have every department head sitting here as in the past. We're only talking about the items on the docket that are up for discussion, and no one here has an issue, I know I don't, of sending those questions ahead of time. Some of these things have to be vetted in public, okay? We may know the answer to a question, but it still needs to be asked in public, because the public may have that question that they need answered. Nothing should be done in secrecy. When I get through the sewer abatements where my questions were answered, we'll see how ridiculous that process is going to be, where I have to reiterate what Steve Kudus' response were to my questions. And now I have more questions that will need to be answered, and I'm not going to do it in secrecy. I agree to a certain extent, but these problems need to be vetted publicly.
Well, like I said before, though, I understand the need for transparency. I think we all want transparency. However, it's just an interpretation of the charter. And that's, I mean, I, we asked for a legal opinion, we got our legal opinion, and we're just, we're working through it.
May I ask a question about that? Who asked for a legal opinion?
Mayor's office.
And the mayor's office asked whom?
Our solicitor.
So the mayor asked the solicitor. And in this case, the solicitor represents whom, the mayor or the council?
The solicitor always represents the city, okay? The solicitor's office represents the city. I don't represent the mayor. I represent the city, departments of the city, including this department, the department of the city council.
So what happens when the legislative and the executive branch have opposing interests?
Then they have conflicts. That would be a legal conflict.
In this case, I would say that this is probably a conflict, right?
It's potentially a conflict. It's not necessarily a conflict. It's potentially, yes. And the only, and the only thing that a solicitor's office can do is give an opinion, and doesn't mean that the mayor or the city council is going to follow that opinion.
Fair enough.
You know, I don't, only a court can actually say what the charter really says, right? So.
But certainly, the solicitor needs to maintain attorney-client privilege with their clients, and if their clients.
The client's the city.
Competing interests, yes. Then that puts, that puts the solicitor, I'm not, I'm not trying to put you.
I know, you know, I know.
That puts the solicitor in a, in a bad place, is my point.
It's, there is, there is inherent conflict when the city solicitor has to represent both the executive branch and the legislative branch in situations like, like what we're discussing now. It's potentially a conflict, yes.
So then the memo that you provided to the mayor, is that also available to the council?
It was provided to the city council president, so yes.
Okay. Could we, could we have a copy of that? I'm just, I'm just, all right. So I have a couple of questions, if I may, and, Mr. Morato, I don't know if I'm cutting into your questions, did I, all right, I don't want to cut you off. Going back under section 2-9, which is the powers of the council, under section six, it indicates that the council has the powers to inquire into the conduct of any office, department, or agency of the city, and make investigation as to municipal affairs, and for such purpose, the council may subpoena witnesses and require the production of records if a simple majority of at least three councils passes a resolution. Okay? Three council members. All right. So that says they may subpoena members, department heads, right? They don't necessarily have to subpoena department heads, to invite department heads to attend and, and answer questions, right? Mark, you indicated that, hey, we're looking at, you know, in cases where there are legislative matters on the docket, I would contend that I don't know what else we're doing up here if we're not involved in the legislative process. It seems to me that, from Mr. Morato's standpoint, if we're talking about sewer rates, is a great example, and we may or may not be passing an ordinance that night, it would be a great benefit for, for us to have Mr. Kudus here, because none of us is an expert in the sewer system or, you know, public works. I would also indicate that, as the charter provision reads, section nine, sub-paragraph six, the council member, the council members have to pass a resolution which shall state with sufficient particularity the legitimate public purpose for the issuance of any such subpoena and the scope of said subpoena. Now, who decides what constitutes sufficient particularity?
Probably my office eventually, but you have the first crack at it.
So I think we've already indicated where the issue might lie there.
Could I just comment, can I just comment on that?
Absolutely.
So subpoenas are investigatory tools.
Right.
Right? And I don't read, and my opinion will bear this out, but I don't read this, the notion of inquire into the conduct of any office. That's when the council is investigating, say, let's just use the office of the law department. So, I'll use my own. So you're investigating my office either because either I breached your attorney-client privilege, or perhaps I hired an attorney or committed malpractice that put the city in jeopardy. So now you have the right to inquire into the conduct of my office by issuing, calling me before the city council, issuing subpoenas, witnesses, whatever.
Requesting you to produce.
Right, right, because you're using your investigatory powers, and no one's disputing that as a legislative body, that the city council has the power to investigate not only my, my office, but any executive department office within the city.
And certainly, we, I mean, I think we can all contemplate scenarios, like 95% of them, where we want to ask questions short of an investigation.
Right. Well, the investigation for misconduct, for, there's many reasons for investigate, but subpoenas are used for investigating, like, like real, like trial, for misconduct and things like that. You don't use a subpoena to, to inquire into legislative matters, right? So if you, you call witnesses for, to get information regarding sewer rates, like, we have an expert that's, we, the city has hired to discuss the issues with sewer rates and how sewer rates are set and what options we have, that's a purely legislative function that you're doing, and knowing suggestion, I don't think even the mayor is suggesting that that person, even Steve, Mr. Steve Kudus, or the person that was hired to go that rate structure with you or how rates are set, that's, that's purely a legislative power.
So let's, let's, let's put all that into, right, and take it apart. I know that the mayor is concerned viewing last or previous councils, how things were done, and that is not a slight to the two members up here. I do not mean it that way in any way, shape, or form. But there were council meetings that got out of hand, and there were department heads that probably took some abuse standing up where you're standing. And I know that he has no interest in them being put in that position again, and I think it's safe to say that none of us has an interest in them being put in a similar position. However, we have had a couple of scenarios whereby council members, I think, have presented legitimate questions and docket items which would require the requisite folks to come and speak, the experts to come and speak, and they have not come and spoken, right? That's, that's definitely happened. So what is it that the council needs to indicate on a docket to say, yes, this is a matter at which someone needs to be here, really no kidding, short of a subpoena, which I don't think any one of us wants to get into issuing?
Yeah, let's definitely stay away from the subpoena process if we can. So, again, it's not, I'm not trying to beat around the bush or anything like that, it's just, and it is a work in progress, you know? We want to come up with a clear, as I had an excellent conversation with our great city clerk on a division of labor, to figure out, you know, where does the purview of the executive end and the legislative begin, and vice versa. The council always has a right to be informed, just as the public always has a right to be Where is the line between inquiry and interference? I don't think anyone's accusing anybody of that. That's certainly not happening. I know the mayor is more concerned about setting precedence 10, 20 years down the line. We have a strong mayor, former government now. You know, East Province pulled to 180. Now, a lot of the power is in the executive. We have to make sure that there are checks and balances.
So to that point, right, completely understand. We want to make it clear that there are very specific certain powers that are reserved to the council. Those are legislation which includes approving a budget, which is, nothing gets done without a budget, right? And from a budgetary perspective, I'm putting on my taxpayer hat now, right? And I look, and I want to thank the clerk for doing a little bit of research for me today and kind of looking into the situations for other cities and towns, and mainly in other cities and towns, when the council requests department heads to come, they come, right? I would also like to point out that per the table of municipal salaries for FY18 for Rhode Island, the Department of Revenue puts out, our department heads are among the most handsomely compensated in the state. Our tax assessor is fifth, our town engineer is first, our finance director is third, our highway director is second, our IT director is second, our planning director is second, our public works director is second in the state, right? Now, I'm not saying that they don't earn those salaries, but certainly if they're not going to do things that other department heads are doing throughout the state, then maybe we have to take a look from a value perspective at what those salaries should actually be. And when it comes time to make a budget, maybe we have to make plans accordingly. So, I mean, these are things that the council needs to pay attention to, right? If the council cannot get that information, if the council cannot have folks come here when I kind of think they should be coming here, you know, and that's not every meeting. We don't need Steve Kudus every meeting. We don't need the police department every meeting. But for them not to be here at all, and I would like to point out, you've been here pretty much every single one. Malcolm's been here pretty much every single one, and you guys have been great about asking questions. But I don't think we're looking to beat anybody over the head, we're just looking to make sure that we don't step in it, right? We need help. We need the experts to tell us what we're doing is right or if it's not right.
Mr. President, please. We rely on department heads. They are working on behalf of the, the best interests of the city. So we are relying on their opinion, which, as I said, we, I consider their opinion, expert opinion in their field. The planning department has their experts, you know, DPW, and they don't necess, it doesn't necessarily have to be Steve Kudus, someone that could answer the questions that we've set ahead of time. It could be a foreman. Me personally, I don't care who, who gets set, as long as these questions, I don't know anything about deduct meters and rates. These are things I'm trying to work through to see how we can fix that ordinance, which to me needs a little tweaking, you know, especially when we give out almost $90,000 a year in abatements, 2016, 17, and they, I don't feel, I don't think it's fair for me to propose an ordinance to start talking about rate changes or deduct meters when I know nothing about deduct meters. And the public should know and should be informed about these deduct meters, for example, which is going to be in one of the next council docket items. And as Mr. Kahoon said, we're not here, this is not the past council, and again, not to, you know, we're not here to berate anyone, we're not here to embarrass anyone, we're just here to get what we got elected for done, and there's a process for that, and that's part of the legislative process, in my mind. And as far as this, the chart is concerned, you know, it can be interpreted in different ways. I'm not in the I'm not an attorney, and I didn't sleep at a Holiday Inn last night, but there's different, it's not clear cut here, either way.
I'll agree with you on that.
Mr. President, I agree, Councilman Kahoon, well-stated, Councilman Murato, and I think that there are growing pains going on right now, and to me, this comes down to a lot of common sense. This is not an issue that cannot be easily solved. This is the first time ever we've had a strong mayor, former government, and there's some growing pains involved. And I think one of the things that Mr. Kahoon said that I want to echo and echo strongly is that each of the five members of this current council, I think, have shown in the early days anyway, that we're taking a professional attitude, we're not going after people, either the public or department heads, and the proof is in the pudding. We'll see if we continue to act that way, but I think that we will. But I do think that Mr. Murato's concern is something that, it's a common sense thing. If we have an item on an agenda and we want, I mean, it can't be frivolous. For instance, last meeting, I, and I've been hopping on the conditions of our pier stadium, and I know I asked to have either a department head and/or staff member come in and answer some questions. We want to do this stuff in public. No one was able to come in. The mayor, however, during the day, did call me and ask to tour the stadium, and along with our field manager, the mayor, myself, we toured the stadium. I was able to get a lot of questions answered and also point out problems that I knew of to the mayor, and then that night at the council meeting, I shared them. But that was an example of one of the things that we're trying to sort out. I have something on the agenda tonight that I asked to have a department head and/or the staffer responsible for that, and it just turns out that it may be you, Mark, so later on, I'll be asking you. But I certainly don't ever intend to subpoena a department head to come here so I can ask her or him a simple question. That's not good government, in my opinion. And I'm not saying that the mayor's office is requesting subpoenas. That was language put in by a charter commission, which, they were new too. They left some holes. You know, they said that we're responsible for the city clerk, but that's about it. But yet, we still have to run a multimillion-dollar budget. And I'm glad to see also one of those persons who comes is the advisor, Mr. Luber has been here at every meeting, you've been here, Malcolm has been to some. So I think we're working, and I also think that DPW is the heart and soul of a city, and if we're going to request Steve Kudus to come here a lot, which I'm sure he will, I have no problem with the mayor saying the next day, Steve, you know, you don't need to be in your truck at 7:00 in the morning, you know, take your time and come in. There's some common sense here. If we're going to require department heads to come and sit here till 9:00, 10:00, or 11:00 o'clock at night, all the time, then a little bit of common sense towards a worker, that that person should get some comp time. I'm sure that kind of happens.
Councilman, I mean, I'll even go as far as to say, if that's the case, then, you know, we can push them up on the docket.
True.
So they're in and out. And Councilman Murato had alluded to, you know, if they know the question and we want to be transparent about it, then, you know, this could be a very simple thing of in and out. And Mr. City Solicitor, you and I had this conversation, we talked about, you know, some of this as well. But I understand where the mayor's coming from with respect to what had happened in the past. This is a new form of government, but, you know, I think the council members, more importantly, I know the council members here are just looking for some clear-cut answers, not to drag anything out or push anything through. We just want, you know, some clear-cut answers so the public is aware of. I think it brings more latitude when someone who, in a position of Steve Kudus, who's Director of Public Works, because, I mean, that's our infrastructure essentially, and caters to, you know, probably 90% of the questions that we have.
Can I say one last, I want to get one last thing off my chest. No, no, you're fine. I'm glad that you clarified that. And I just want to say this, because I've been around the city for a long time, a very long time. I've seen administrations going back to, when I mention certain administrators, most people say who? I mention the original superintendents of schools, they say who? You know, city managers, I've been here through all of them being hired and fired, including superintendents, which I might add, for anybody who wants to know, we did have a former superintendent of schools who passed away a few days ago. He wasn't here that long, but Dr. Tarasheboi, who was here for a little while, did pass away this month. But in any event, I have seen the system, and one of the reasons why I ran for office, you're going to have to let me, Mr. President, be on a soapbox for about 30 seconds here and try to stop me.
Okay.
But one of the reasons I ran was because of the lack of respect that city workers, city administrators, and in particular, school department employees, and students and families were getting in this city. I lived in my own personal case and in some other instances. I saw it when Councilman Murato and I went to Grassy Plains the other day, and the neighbor came over and says, this is the first time in 10 years we've had a city official of any kind come down here and walk through this muddy ground with us. And I've seen schools be disrespected to where the East Providence teachers were made the lowest paid in New England. That respects education? Not in my mind. And city councils and city managers prior had something to do with that. There was a concerted effort to make that happen, and other school programs suffered, middle school sports was cut out, they talked about cutting a very important middle school music program. It was a horrible time for a few years in East Providence. That changed quickly in an election when all those people were dismissed at the polls, and a new group came in. What am I getting at? You know, it seems like we're piling on the mayor tonight, we're really not. I think we're trying to fix this new system, and I want to commend the mayor's office for showing that respect that I haven't seen in an awful long time. This mayor, yourself, his office, has been visiting schools, and if we're not about children and education in schools, then I'm out of here. What are we about? That's our future, our families, as well as doing the street sweeping, which is just as important and all of the other stuff. And I don't mention that, Councilwoman, I'm just at the top of my head. And supporting our senior citizens, it's all equal. But if we don't respect families, and this mayor's doing that, every morning, and I know it's a Facebook world, it's social media, it shouldn't be, but it is, and I see him having breakfast at different places, taking a picture with the waitress and putting it on social media and saying, "Good morning, East Providence," at 6:00 in the morning, going to schools and doing the high fives with the students, respecting education. And so bring the message back, at least from this councilman, that this is not about beating him up. It's about trying to fix this system, and I may not agree with everything he's doing about this department head thing, but tell him it's common sense. If we want to call a department head in for a 10-minute session, a few questions, who are we hurting? Much better to do that than have these discussions all the time. And I'll be the first one to move that we bring them up early. We might even want to have a section on the agenda, department heads, where it's the first thing we do, and they can go home and watch the Red Sox lose, like, you know, the rest of the people who are home.
Just for clarity, that's what they're doing right now.
They're losing, thank you, Mr. Yankee fan over here.
A seven to none.
Anyway, you know what I'm saying, that this is not a bang anybody over the head. Doesn't mean I agree with everything he's doing, you know, we've got to fix some stuff, but he inherited a lot, and so did we, and I think together, we'll pull this out.
Well.
Thank you for indulging that speech.
It was a great speech. Mr. Vice President, I think part of the reason that we have this, that this discussion can come up and be civil is because the mayor's office and the council have such a great working relationship together. And I think that, you know, they are growing pains, they'll eventually get sorted out. We disagree on this particular issue, but we'll, you know, we'll come to a common ground with the help of the law department. But, you know, the mayor has nothing but respect for each member of this council. You know, the professionalism, the attention to detail that you've all put in, as someone that does constituent services, I can say that all of you contact me regularly with potholes or anything that pops up, and that it's always a pleasure to work with you. And, you know, we don't want any animosity, we just want to continue to have a great working relationship moving forward.
And I think you make a good point, Mark, and thank you for saying, bringing that up. Constituent concerns, right? So a majority of the constituents reach out to the sitting body up here. That's who they reach out to, it's your elected officials. And though the mayor, newly formed, is an elected official, it's not who people go to regularly, it's the council. They call, they email, they'll see you throughout the city and the community. And so we, like we have in the past, try to discuss, problem solve, what the issues are and how to best fix them or address them. And certainly, working with the mayor's office is important, it needs to be done. I think the public and maybe some of the council, it's an equal balance, so it shouldn't be, you know, the council as a whole, and I'm just speaking for myself, I was elected by the constituents, I answer to the people that watch, that call, that see, that work in this community, I don't answer to the mayor's office, and that's no offense to you or to the mayor's office. So being told who to call, what to do through the mayor's office and saying that I can't ask because a constituent asks and just feed everything and let you guys deal with it, well, if somebody comes to me with a problem, concern, they're looking for me to respond to them, not necessarily the mayor's office, which certainly can be involved in doing that, but I think it's important that the office recognizes that we are the front line, the council members, to the community, and when there are issues that they can't, they feel like they're not getting resolved through the city administration, whether it be the mayor's office or any other department, they look to the person that they elected on the council for some guidance, for some assistance with the issue, and they're not looking to hear, well, that's out of our hands, just like we heard earlier with the senior center. That's not a good response, or should be the response, from one of us up here saying, my hands are tied, you elected me to serve you, to be your voice, to help you, and to move things in the right direction, but I don't have a say in what you're asking me to do or have any voice or opinion. I think it needs to be done in a team manner, and I know, like Vice Counsel President Rogic said, it is growing pain, so there's probably a little bit of a learning curve as to how to blend the powers, you know? It's not a dictatorship, it's not one person running. It was an election, people trusted that somebody or that all of us as collective, elected officials are here to work together for the better. And so when changes are made in the community that affect the community, either in a specific area of the community or as the community as a whole, much like up here, we have to make decisions collectively or a majority, and I think the same probably would be in the best interest of also the mayor's office or administration to collectively come together with a plan, maybe get some input. Not saying that we're going to be the end-all decision-makers, obviously, it's the administration, but what is the input of the rest of the council? Where do we think, you know, have we heard? And I do think, I know you guys had meetings, and, but obviously, mayor's office and scheduling meetings and what the rest of the council, or even the public, as you know, the public is not always here to listen to what's going on or have time in their busy schedule to make these meetings. They might catch it tomorrow on the Facebook, they might catch it tomorrow on television, and then subsequent questions start to pile up, and then phone calls and emails come as a result of that. So I think keeping an open communication and being very transparent is what this council wants to do, and that's why the backdoor emails and questions are fine for preparation to a public discussion. And I think that that's what it sounds like, what you are saying the office wants to try to do, to the best of your ability.
And if I just may interject here, you know, there are some things that we're able to get involved with, and then there are other things that we're not allowed to get involved with. So I hear what you're saying, but when it comes from an administrative perspective and a decision that administrates, whether we like it or not, whether we're for it or not, we really don't have a voice in that decision. So we can bend someone's ear, we could talk, but at the end of the day, that decision administratively stands with the mayor.
Right, the final decision, but we should be able to have a say, lend, you know, have a discussion on what, like up here, none of us individually has a say on what happens, we have to collectively make the decision, and that's.
Right, but, you know, and especially with respect to the senior center, I mean, we just don't have a, we just don't have a voice in that decision. As much, we could say whatever we want, but at the end of the day, that's the mayor's decision, whatever choice he makes at that point in time, just like legislatively, he doesn't have a voice up here legislatively, what direction we go in as well, so.
I think, well, I think the word "voice" is probably not the right one, he doesn't have a, we don't have a voice. We do have a voice.
We have a voice.
It might not be taken, the voice that we.
It might not be, it might not be what you want to hear, but it's, it's the reality of it.
If you can't even get with the mayor.
I'm not going to get into that discussion at this point, at this time, sir, and I'd love to talk to you afterwards about it, but I'm just saying going forward, we just, we just don't have, I mean, we can talk to him, we can get, have conversation with him, but when it comes time for administrative decisions, it's just like the hiring and firing of individuals, we just can't get involved with it.
If I could add one thing, regarding that senior center meeting, I was there. I know that a lot of us, due to our work schedules or whatever, can't be there, there'll be days when I can't make events and some of you can't. But I was there, I spoke, I talked to a lot of people there, I thought the whole day went pretty well. So we're involved when we can be, and I spent the day there, and I thought it went pretty well.
Yeah. So I've talked with respect to this issue and department heads coming up, I spoke to the city solicitor, and I spoke to the mayor, and I want to continue to press on with that issue as time goes on. So I have been in touch with him, I've been talking to him about it, I've been in touch with Mr. Fattaro and the city solicitor as well. But, you know, hopefully, and let's see what comes about it.
Just as a request that Mr. Kahoon had, Councilman Kahoon, if we could just kind of get a memo so that we knew, because I didn't know that there was a judgment or any decision.
Well, it wasn't, what I had asked him was, I didn't ask him for an opinion when he was reciting the ordinance to me, and I asked him for a copy of that, and he sent me a memo on that, is what he sent me.
Not an opinion.
So I didn't think it was anything that he was sending to me to share with others, it was just that I had requested at that time with respect to the ordinance regarding this issue here.
And just to be clear, I actually, refreshing my recollection, I think it was the council president who asked me for the opinion, not the mayor's office, so, so I think it was you, if I remember correctly. Happy to share it with you, I think the councilman wants a more detailed memo, and if that's the wish of the entire council, I'll be happy to send him a more detailed memo. These are gray areas, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, and there is no clear-cut answer, and the best way to do it is try to work through it. But, you know, there are only words on a page until you, it's your role and the mayor's role to make those words meaningful and to have a, how are they going to be operating? No one's perfect. I certainly, anyone can look at that language, as you said, and come to two different conclusions, and that's why we have courts. I don't think we want to go that far. But we can, there's a way around this, we can certainly figure it out, but I'm happy to render a more detailed opinion if that's what the councilman is requesting and with the support of the rest of the council. I can let you know that these non-interference clauses are something that appear in almost every city charter, particularly in Rhode Island, but in many states, and we can figure that out.
Okay. Councilman, any other further questions?
I want to thank you, Mr. Fattaro. Sorry, I have to be in this, you know, between, you know, two bodies there, I guess you can say.
I'm liaising.
But it has to be, it has to be addressed and it has to be corrected. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fattaro. Moving right along, next item, please.
Discussion-only budget format discussion, Councilman Murato.
I want to, unless anyone has any input or anything. I don't have anything at this moment. I know Councilman Kahoon is working on that. And for our workshop that we had, one of the council meetings, I'm just going to table that for now.
Thank you, Councilman. Next item, please.
Discussion-only Code Red notification system, Council Vice President Rogics.
Mr. President, Mr. Fahado, don't go far, please. Let's see, you're the designated department head that is here at my request. And I have some questions about our system. These are not complaints. These, these are informational questions. I heard from a couple of constituents who, when the recent Code Red notification went out about the water situation, they said they hadn't received the calls. Now, I had operated a similar system for the school apartment. I'm pretty sure, I know how they run, so here are my questions. One, do we have, is this an outside software program that is, is run in City Hall? We purchased it, this Code Red system, or what, what is the Code Red system?
Yeah, we use that. I'm not sure too much into the specifics on the IT section. That's something Patricia and Kelly really work on as far as the implementation goes with it. I can say that before this administration, it was used a little bit differently. It wasn't used as much just because they used it more as like a true emergency alert system, whereas now, we've, we've tried to use it a little bit more, like, for instance, with the changes to TONAV, with the, the water issues, anytime that there's parking bans, anything like that, we, we try to use it more. And it kind of, so it's based on using landline phones. So, any phone that you have that's registered as an East Providence number, it's automatically locked into the Code Red. So, they automatically will get that robo-call. However, a lot of people don't have landlines anymore. I don't. And if that's the case and you don't, you know, receive that, you can always either call City Hall if you want the notifications, we can do it, or you can do it directly if you go to the website. There's a Code Red banner at the bottom. You click that, you can sign up. You actually have the option. You can get the robo-call, you can get an email, or you can get a text, or you can get all three. And then, the robo-calls, I believe it's three times. It'll call three times during an emergency situation. And if it comes up busy, it'll call again until it's registered as answered. That, if it picks up voicemail, that's going to count as an answer, but then it will leave the voicemail. I've noticed a lot of people who don't answer the call. I'm not saying that this is the case to what you're saying, is it does come up as a 1-800 number, so that might be. But, we also have the ability to track each number that it went to. So, if you would like afterwards, or at your convenience, to provide me with who, the phone numbers of the people that didn't receive it, we can actually check through our system and see if a call went out to that number, if it's in our database. If not, we can add it. If it is, we can look if there was a technical error and it bounced back or something like that.
That, that was my key question of the night. I let this constituent know that I thought we could do that. I said I would, if, I'll get back to her tomorrow, and if they want to give me their, their phone number, then I'll call and we'll, and as I know how these systems work, we should be able to tell if the call was received, if someone picked up, if it went to a busy number, just so we can tell people when they call that, you're right, you didn't get it, or the record shows that you did get it. I know in my case, I don't have a landline, but I did get the Code Red. It came in on my cell. So, you know, there must be a way of, of doing that, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of different.
Reporting and.
Yeah, we can even change as far as the scope, too. Right now, the policy we've implemented, because we're trying to inform as many people as possible whenever changes are made, that we do it citywide to all the numbers we have available. I know previously, I don't believe that the city was doing that all the time. You can limit the scope, like you can do it geographically, like if you wanted to just send alerts to Riverside residents or something like that, you could do that.
Great. Well, any of these are my questions, and you didn't even need a subpoena. Thank you.
See, that's.
I appreciate it.
If I may, that, to me, was educational and informative. You got answers, more than what I knew. I didn't know anything about the Code Red, and now I know. And I'm sure the members of the public, now they too know. And that's part of what I was talking about.
Yeah, true.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is discussion-only notification of pending remediation project on 220 and 210 Mass. Sawyer Avenue, Council President Britto.
Sure. 210, 220 Mass. Sawyer Avenue, just to give someone an idea and landmark where this building is located, it's across, or I should say adjacent to the old Getty terminals that turned into a Hess gas station once before. That building that sits, I mean, depending upon which direction you're coming from, that building is a standalone building that once was a processing building, manufacturing film, I guess it was. I think it was a Fuji building, the name of the company that owned that building. However, that building is going to be taken down over the summertime. The contractor or environmental demolition company that's going to be taking that building down had noticed me, had notified me last week that they're in the process of having their permits being reviewed by DOT and D E M. They're expecting that to come out sometime during the summertime. With that being said, they're anticipating on knocking that building down by the midsummer. The reason why I put this on is because not so much the environmental or remediation, but because during that time that they're taking that building down, there's going to be an odor released in the air. It's non-toxic, so you don't have to be concerned about that. But I just want the public to be aware of, and I'll be mentioning this as time goes on, and in addition to that, there will be a, a, a city, excuse me, a meeting, a neighborhood meeting with respect to this. When that building goes down for a good three to four-week period, there's going to be almost like a rotten egg smell during that time. And I know people like to go out and they say, have you smelt this? And nobody knows where the smell is coming from. So, I want to put people on notice at this point in time that during the midsummer, when that building comes down, there's going to be a rotten odor smell coming from, coming from that area. Now, on a good day, with a good gush of wind, depending upon what direction that wind is going in, they're going to smell the odor. Whereabouts and how far it would take it, I'm not exactly sure. There will be a community-style meeting again to inform the public more in depth about this project and when it's going to exactly take place and when they anticipate, you know, the smell to be in the air, how it's going to be airborne, and there are going to be a lot of heavy-duty trucks in that specific area on Mass. Sawyer Avenue. So, I just want to put it out into the public's eyes now and let them be able to digest some of this. And when it comes for the time, again, we will have the contractor available for any questions, concerns, or answers that the public may have prior to the building going down. So, that's anticipated again sometime in the middle of the summer over Mass. Sawyer Avenue, 210, 220 Mass. Sawyer Avenue, adjacent to where the former Getty tanks were. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is public hearings, ordinances for the vote, second passage in public hearing. An ordinance and amendment of Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended entitled Administration, sponsored by Councilman Morato.
To the President, if I may ask just a couple of questions, because we've been through this one a couple of times now. Madam Clerk, the application form that's referenced in the revised ordinance, is that currently available online, or is that still, do we still need to come into the clerk's office to pick that up or request it be emailed?
We need to get that onto the city website. As of right now, somebody would need to either contact the city clerk and I can, or me, and I could email it or mail it to them or what have you. It's just that the city website is undergoing migration right now, so they're not making very many changes to it. So, as of right now, we should continue to do that. But otherwise, once the migration of the city website is, is done, then we can have it, we can have it on there.
So, because the, the ordinance does say that the form is available on the website, and I don't think we should hold up passing of the ordinance over that, is it, I think it's easy enough to just say on the website, hey, call the clerk's office while the, right? If you want this form, call the clerk's office.
It does currently say that. You can contact me by, like, a hyperlink or.
All right. So, that's, and then I had just one question about one word in the ordinance, if I may. Under Section C, C or E? Oh, I don't know. I think it's C. It's the passage that says, in accordance with Section A above, or when there have been, when there has been no other eligible application received. So, this is the whole question, is it's posted for 10 days, or there's no eligible. Shouldn't that be an "and"?
No, or, right? So, it's either no one applies, or you could, or you're otherwise ineligible for, maybe you don't live in the city, maybe there's no, no valid application.
So, let's say, so, all right, so if it goes for 10 days, then we're clear. But, or, if no one eligible applies and it's less than 10 days, we wouldn't be clear, though.
Yeah, so someone applied, but they're not, for, for other, for some other reason, they're not ineligible. Or, right?
Right. Well, I would think you would have to have both. Both conditions would have to be met in order for the appointment to be valid. You, you would have to, you would have to have an eligible person, and you would have to pass that 10 days if you're falling into that bucket where you're looking at somebody who's looking for more than one appointment. I, I don't think we need to get super hung up about it. I mean, can we just take another, another quick look at it?
I'll take a look at it, but.
And then, how, whatever you feel about, Mike, that's, I'm cool with.
That's fine.
Thank you.
If we have to make a change at a later date, we'll do it. But I think.
Okay.
I, I think, I think it needs to be or.
Okay.
And I'll tell you why when I.
No, I got you. I'm going to, I'm going to trust your legal reading.
Okay. Would that be it, Councilman?
Yes, that's it for me.
Okay. Any further questions? Would anyone like to move the passage?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. Anyone here in the public would like to speak for or against this ordinance, please step up to the podium. Sir, for the record, can you just state your?
I don't even know if I have the right. Is that the ordinance they're talking about now?
No, no.
Well, it says right here.
It wasn't in the packet.
See the attached form and full ordinance, right?
It's not.
Where is it?
This is the second passage. We threw it out on the board. This is the first passage.
My second passage.
Yes, second passage.
It's all right, yeah, but it's, what I'm trying to do is.
Oh, you're trying to find it. This wasn't attached.
It wasn't attached, because this is the one I grabbed from the front, too.
So, another one we go looking for. All right. No, sorry to be.
No, it's fine. Happy to help.
Thank you.
And just for the record, it has been advertised in accordance to the ordinance needed.
Anyone here would like to speak for or against this ordinance, please step forward.
What are you doing? I don't know what it is. I listen, I don't know what it is.
Did you just read the ordinance?
The ordinance is an amendment to Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended entitled Administration.
Thank you. What is that?
That's regards to the boards and commissions. This was passed for first passage in the, in the previous meeting.
I can still, what are you talking about?
It governs, sir, it governs how city, city board positions are filled within the city.
Yeah, it's been extensive discussion on this.
Okay. With that being said, public comment is closed at this point in time and move to vote. Is there a motion? Would anyone like to make a motion at this point in time?
I make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion about Councilman Morato. Anyone like to second that motion to the passage? Second?
I'm sorry? I make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay. We have a second to approve the ordinance by Councilman Rogics. Roll call, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rogics.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Councilman Britto.
Aye. That was second passage, that's, so, should we pass going forward? Does it start right at this moment?
I believe it's.
Needs to go up to the mayor now.
The mayor's got a 10-day see to veto, sign or.
Okay.
So, I can deliver that tomorrow to the mayor.
Sure. Thank you. Next item, please.
An ordinance, this is a first passage. It's an ordinance and amendment of Chapter 7 of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended entitled Health and Sanitation, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
So, this ordinance is coming before the council again in regards to health and sanitation of the city and the environment. So, this is regarding pollution that is coming of way of plastic bags specifically. As we know, there has been a great movement in recycling and cleaning up the plastic that has overtaken not only the regular city, curbs, trees, grass areas, but primarily a big influence in our marine life. And we are, the city has been working diligently in trying to build up the beach at Seaver's Point. We just had a great cleanup thanks to a combination between the Riverside Renaissance and the Riverside Sisters, where a couple of tons, I think it was, which is significant amount of trash, plastic debris, was cleaned off of the beach and the surrounding areas. And that's just a day, you know, an afternoon worth of cleaning, not to mention the stuff that's still left behind or keeps washing up on a day-to-day basis. This affects our health as a community, our well-being, and that of animal life that is in the city or that lives in the grasslands or forests in the community. So, this is something that I feel is very important for our, us as a community. It's something that was the East Bay neighboring towns, specifically Barrington, a few years ago, fought very hard for, pioneered, and were successful in starting in their community and has caught, like wildfire in the Bay Area and those who have adjacent marine life or attached to it. I know the governor's office at last council, there was quite a bit of discussion or debate regarding this ordinance, and they felt that it should have been a state mandate, not necessarily a city mandate. And I know that the governor's office had tasked, a task force last year to investigate, to get research, and to come up with legislation to present to the General Assembly, and that was wrapped up, I believe, in February. So, the state recognizes the importance of this, and being the ocean state, we have a lot of marine life and coastland that we have to preserve if we want to be able to use it. And I know a lot of incentives in the beaches for recycling has taken place, and I think that East Providence should be one of those that pioneers this and takes real concern. I don't think it's just limited, and I know it's not just limited to plastic bags, plastic of all types effect, because it is, it's not degradable. It lasts longer than we do. So, this is really just the stepping stone moving forward in a series of attempts to better our environment and practice to do so. I know that there's been discussion amongst the community or maybe businesses. It is in no way shaped to make anybody have any hardship. Certainly, a provision for coming before the council to state your, you know, hardship is always available. But a lot of companies already have made these initiatives, already starting maybe two years ago in the transition to reusable bags. And nowadays, I can't think of anybody who doesn't use a reusable bag for their daily shopping as it is, and/or plastic bags that are denser packaged so that it's a plastic bag that is reusable. And that goes from somebody who is in the upper-class income down to the low-class, you know, low-income population. There is affordable bags for all, and this is, and stores do provide that for you if you need it. So, I welcome any comments, concerns from my. So I welcome any comments, concerns from my fellow colleagues regarding this topic before moving forward on a vote.
I know I had addressed some concerns during the last council regarding this ordinance, and I seem to dig into this, or I did dig into this a little further, and as I looked into it further and further, I became more and more supportive with this. However, I did have, just, my concern was primarily especially some of the high-rises where people walk to and from, for an example, over at Office Parkway, which was brought to my attention during that time, where people just walked to and from, and they liked the fact of those lightweight plastic bags. It was convenient for them, it was conducive for them, and more importantly, they didn't have to pay for something. So that was one of the concerns that I had addressed at that time. But the other matter that I'm looking at into this is those plastic bags, if I'm not mistaken, the supermarkets have a place that you can recycle.
It is a mandate that they have to provide.
They have to bring them...
Recyclable bin for people to recycle plastic bags that they have. So it's a practice that we're trying to get people in the habit of doing. Do people, all people, do it? No, because clearly we see them in trees and across the fences and in grass bushes. But it is federally mandated that stores, supermarkets specifically, have to provide a reciprocal for people to bring back plastic bags.
And has that been effective?
Oh, yeah. That's, mhm, that's been effective for a long, for quite some time.
I mean, that was one of my biggest concerns, because that was what was addressed to me at that point in time. I haven't heard anything since.
And these plastic bags are very frail. I mean, people have to usually double-bag the plastic bag to carry, you know, milk and something else in it. They're not very sturdy to begin with. That's why they kind of just fly away and get stuck in trees. So there are heavier bags that are plastic bags that you can use as recyclable bags also, and those are 10 cents you get, they provide them at Savers. And you can reuse those over and over if you don't want to buy the dollar cloth, stitch-woven recyclable bags. So, yeah, I mean, I appreciate the questions and concerns, and obviously, you know, if you don't know, you ask and hopefully satisfy those questions. But this is all in the best interest. We're moving right to an eco-friendly environment. That's one of the biggest things that we're trying to do in the community and in the nation as a whole and across the board. So whatever we can do, our little piece, I mean, I'll go as far to say that, you know, a big company, Walt Disney, everything, they have no plastic. It's, the straw's not plastic. I mean, when you, when big corporations recognize the impact that waste has on the environment, plastic bottles, I know we're up here drinking out of them, but the tons and tons and tonnage that are in the middle of the Pacific Ocean that affect our marine life is, it's really unfathomable if you look at it and research it.
So when checking out a retail store now, whether it's a supermarket or otherwise, do you have to bring a bag, or will they provide you with an alternative?
Preferably, if, you know, keeping with the cycle, people would bring bags. But if you do not, as long as it meets the criteria of the measurement of the bag, so the density of the bag and the measurement of the bag, there wouldn't be a problem.
So the supermarkets or otherwise would have to get those type of plastic bags?
Mhm.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And just for the record, I know our local supermarkets do provide three different types. They provide the flimsy ones that we're trying to get rid of. Hopefully, they provide a denser, heavier, reusable plastic, and they provide the dollar-woven cloth bags for whatever your options are preferred.
Can I just ask one question? I think this is a great idea. I think you and I have spoken about this before. Thanks for taking this on, because it's a cool thing to do. I know in Boston, they implemented a very similar ordinance in the last six months or a year, and there's a couple of just differences in the way that they did it. And I'm not saying one way is good or bad. I just want to know, you know, we can talk through them and see.
Sure.
But I know that they, instead of outright prohibiting the use of the plastic bag, they basically ascribed a nickel cost to each plastic bag, and the nickel cost had to be itemized separately by that store. So if the city wanted to come in and inspect how many bags they were producing, they could see, okay, it's this many nickels. And I think the thinking there was, well, A, you get people say, oh, I'm not going to pay that extra nickel for the bag. We'll stuff it, you know, in fewer bags. Or maybe they take the thing home and instead of letting it blow away, okay, now it's a nickel, right? Maybe I'll just, you know, stick it in a, you know, those tubes that they have, right? Use a bag or something else. So I don't know if there's any thought along those lines. The other thing is, I know that when they implemented it, they put it in place so it actually became effective one year from the date of passage, and I know we're looking at six months. I don't know if there's any thought about, you know, whether a year's too much, whether six months is too little, and I don't have a feel for it one way or the other, because I've never, obviously, been involved in an ordinance like this, so...
Sure. So I personally don't have a specific preference, whether it's six months, two years. I think when you're doing something like this, the sooner you can implement it, the better results come from it. This ordinance particularly mimics really what the Bay State ordinance is, so any town or state or city in Rhode Island has kind of used the same one, so that we're all kind of lateral in what our expectations are, so that way, when you're shopping in Barrington, which is your neighbor to Riverside, that requirement for those stores or shops are no different than when you cross back over into East Providence. So it makes it fair across the board for all retailers. And when I first brought this actually up a year ago, I did get feedback from retailers who were asking, when is it implemented? So they recognize that this is something that has been happening in other communities, and they want to be on board with it, because I think, again, overall, everybody wants what's best for the environment, and so making those changes isn't, hasn't been that big of a deal from that perspective.
CBS in Boston is like abandoned plastic bags entirely. It's just all paper.
Yeah.
If you, you know, don't use them, yeah.
Mr. President, I want to thank you, Councilwoman, for taking this on as well. Bottom line for me is, this is just good for the environment. We might need to do some tweaking, but overall, plastics everywhere, I mean, it gets into a battle with different political ideologies, but for me, bottom line is, I see the evidence, and plastic doesn't go away. I see it in the summer and near the water a lot. I see it, I used to see it all the time. I see Mrs. Morris in the back of the room when she worked at the high school, and I would be there a lot when the shores was at its older location, right across the street from the high school, not down the parking lot. Custodians were out there every day. The front of the high school lawn, that nice area, was just full of plastic bags and cups and things that blew across the street and ended up there. We would see them all the time. So there's no reason why in 2019, we shouldn't be supporting stuff like this. There are others who don't have environmental concerns, and, you know, I understand those arguments. They don't want Big Brother, Big Sister telling them what kind of bag to carry. In my case, I weigh on the side of the environment, so I support this.
So with that being said, Councilwoman, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. If it's the pleasure of the council, I'm indifferent to the term in which we start once it has made second passage, whether it's six months or a year. Is there any preference or reason why the council thinks it should be one versus the other?
Is it up to a year? Could someone do it quicker if they wanted to, or are we...
Yeah, so within six months. The six month being the deadline.
Is the way it is now, yeah.
Yeah, the six months being the deadline.
Either way... Personally, I would say, I mean, six months. I mean, it gives companies also time to clear out the inventory and move on. I think it's more than enough.
All right. So that being said, with the pleasure of the council, I ask to pass for first passage, amended, the amendment as stated for...
So we have a motion on the floor for first passage approval?
Second, I'll move.
We have it seconded by Councilman Murato. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
An aye with explanation, I'm sure, because there's another passage, so if someone wanted to come forward, that, you know, the word is out there now. You can send in comments or come to the meeting and speak, but I enthusiastically vote aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Council President Berto.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Continued business, sewer rates and abatements. Councilman Murato.
So last council meeting, I had a few questions that were for Steve Kudo. He wasn't here at the last meeting, so there were questions that were forwarded to Mark Fattaro up the chain, to Mr. Kudo back up the chain, to, I have some answers to some questions that I asked at the last council meeting. The sewer rates and abatements is also a topic that came up at my community meeting, and no one wants to see, you know, our taxes go up, no one wants to see an additional fee of sewer rates, and, you know, we're also going to get the high school. My position on this, it's that we should really do our homework before we start raising sewer rates. Look at all the options, answer all the questions, and even ask, even answer the questions that we may already have the answers to. And I believe, again, transparency, and educate the public as to why these sewer rates need to be raised, if it needs to be raised, and those questions that need to be answered. So some of the questions that I answered at the last meeting, for example, pertaining to sewer abatements, how does an individual get a deduct meter? Who installs it? What is the permitting process? And what are the savings? A lot of the abatements that we do are filling of pools and watering of lawns. Those are basically the majority. We do get a lot of leaky toilets. So the answer for Mr. Kudo is, a deduct meter application can be obtained from the Water Utilities Division. The attached forms, which details the process of installing a deduct meter, can be obtained from the city website. The customer is responsible for hiring their own plumber for the installation of the deduct. A plumbing permit and deduct meter application is required. The city sewer use rate provides for an annual exemption of 3,500 cubic feet or 292 cubic feet per month. This means that the first of, the first of 292 cubic feet of water used each month is not charged for sewer. It is important to note that once a customer installs a deduct meter, they no longer receive the exemption. Therefore, it's cost-effective for a customer to install a deduct meter if their annual outdoor water usage exceeds 3,500 cubic feet. Question two, does anyone, anyone can interrupt at any point on a council if they have a question on? Do you, my question was, do you know the abatement for 50% usage for lawns in Pawtucket? I don't know if that's exactly how I asked that question, but the response was, I am not familiar with the abatement program in Pawtucket. Pawtucket residents and businesses are in the Narragansett Bay Commission Sewer District and are billed directly by Narragansett Bay. So my new question to that would be, and the reason why I brought that up, doing the research that we do, and this is the other question I would, I had that night, which I don't have the answer to right now, what is our current rate that we charge? From what I understand, 50% is what Pawtucket starts at. I don't know, I don't really know exactly what that means. I don't know if we raise our rate, starting at 50%, if that's a good point to start. I don't know. I honestly don't know. So I guess I'll have to ask and send up the chain more questions. And I'm keeping track of the questions in red, because I'm getting confused as to what was asked and what was answered in the past. The other question I asked was, what would it cost the city to operate the sewer plant ourselves? This is getting into the question of sewer rates, the raising of sewer rates, and that's one of the questions that I feel we need answered. For example, and the answer was, this is one of the alternatives that we will be looking into, and we have recently issued a RFQ for engineering consulting services to assist us in this evaluation. It is the city administration's objective to evaluate the most cost-effective means to operate and maintain the city's wastewater facilities while maintaining a high level of service and meet all regulatory requirements. There are several prospective options, including development of a RFQ, RFP, for bidding of wastewater contract services. Renegotiate current agreement with SUEZ. Reassume municipal operations of operation and maintenance of wastewater facilities and partnering with the Narragansett Bay Commission. Those are the questions that I've been asking all along, and these are the questions that I believe should be answered prior to discussions as to sewer rates. Let's get these answers, these questions answered first, because my feeling is that one of those four plans that have been proposed to us, to the public and to the previous council and now this council, perhaps there's something different in one of those proposals, or perhaps there's a completely different proposal, or perhaps there's no need to raise the water rates. I don't know the answer to those questions right now.
Councilman, I think I have the answer, and I have some time to digest this, especially since the last council meeting. And one of the things that we fail to overlook at this point in time is that we never talk about what is the delinquent account for the sewer. In the past, it was up in excess of $2 million. So I don't want to have a discussion on raising any rates at this point in time, because if we're delinquent $500,000 and we have $1 million of unpaid sewer bills, then guess what? I mean, it's very simple to me that we collect $1 million and we don't have to have this discussion about raising any rates whatsoever, because that in itself will put us over and beyond the amount that we're behind on. So as far as I'm concerned, is, let's take the first step and see, what are the delinquent accounts? How much is owed? People are not paying their bills? If they're not, I think we should start really reinforcing collecting these delinquent accounts here, because what we're doing here is, we're essentially talking about raising taxes because we're not collecting money that's due, and I don't want to get into that position. We're in a situation right now where, I mean, people are taxed already enough on the sewer bill. I mean, the sewer rate is just astronomical at this point in time, and I don't want to go on to have a discussion about, you know, how much, whether it's option one, two, three, or four, when we have a concept delinquent. It could be $1 million, I'm not sure. If it's a half a million dollars, let's collect a half a million dollars, and guess what? We don't have to have this discussion any further, because at this point in time, we break even. But to raise the rates because people are delinquent and not paying their bills, so other people can subsidize for that, once again, I can't see this happening at this point in time.
And I appreciate that. I thank you for that, and that's it. And there again, there's another question that should be answered.
So let's find out...
And that was not one I was thinking of, but I appreciate that, and we should add that to that list.
Let's add that to that list. How much is owed? And let's start collecting what's owed.
I just...
Now, for those who can't pay, then you come into City Hall and you make a payment plan.
And there goes the same for water also.
Exactly. And I would suggest that, I mean, if you can't pay the amount that you're offering to pay, don't make that as part of the deal. Don't say, I can pay $200 extra a month when you can only pay $100 extra a month, because you're going to find yourself being delinquent again and your water turned off. And I know this is kind of sensitive to a lot of people out there, when the last time the city took these steps to turn off water. But, you know, in a matter of three weeks, there was, I think, if I'm not mistaken, $2 million that was outstanding. In a matter of three weeks, we collected well over half a million dollars. So I think where we need to stop, let's forget about the options, because when we talk about options, we're talking about tax increase on the water. Let's collect, let's find out first how much is delinquent, and let's go after that money that's delinquent to offset how much is owed.
Mr. President, if I may, and Mr. Murato, you know, I applaud your efforts in trying to plow through this, because it's complicated and it's a mess. And there are two things, I think, that Mr. Murato has kind of asked about, too, that kind of got me focusing on it. One is, well, if we've got an issue with the enterprise fund, we've got an issue with revenue or expenditures or both, right? So let's take a look at what we're spending. We're spending money on SUEZ, right? We're spending money on Narragansett Bay Commission as a city to treat wastewater for the city. With regard to revenue, we get the revenue from the residents who pay for their sewer fees, and we also get revenue from the town of Barrington for treating their wastewater, which all flows our way, right? And one of the things I know that Councilman Murato asked for was any agreement that exists between Barrington. I've seen that agreement. It was signed in 1973, and it expired in 1998. So if we're going to take a look at our different, all of our different avenues, if you will, before we take a look at any kind of... before we take a look at any kind of rate increase, I think those are two areas where we need to look at. And I know the mayor is focused on that, too. Expenditures to NBC and revenue coming from Barrington.
And that's my next question that I did ask, I've been asking, well, I actually added this per our, that workshop that we had upstairs in room 306. And the question is, what would it cost to renegotiate the contract with Barrington so that they pay their fair share? Right now, I apparently, from what I understand, I pay 20% of operating costs to the Riverside facility. I don't know if it's overall operating cost. You know, that facility, at one point, I read that it was $18 million a year to operate. The last workshop, it was $14 million and change to operate. Is it, do they pay 20% of that whole operating cost? I, you know, but as you said, that was an agreement that was done in the 70s, and it should really be reexamined. And some of the shortfalls that we have, apparently, right now, it's $500,000. You know, in the grand scheme of things, in a budget of 180-plus million dollars, and I know that will change as the months go on, 500 will then become more and more. I think that's something easily attainable by looking at these options first before we start talking about tax rates. And as Councilman President Brito said, that's another good option, to collect some of these delinquent outstanding sewer bills. And with that said, I only have one more question that I posed, asked, can the city place a cap on abatements, as we do with potholes, for example? And the answer is sewer abatements, abatement procedure and calculation is a city ordinance, the city council can adjust or modify the ordinance. I was actually looking for a little guidance on that from that, a department head. With that said, I just have the four questions that I will reiterate. Will it be possible to renegotiate with SUEZ? Is it possible to look into the Barrington contract? Is it possible to see if it would be more cost-effective if we ran our own sewer plant as we did years prior? Is it cost-effective for Narragansett Bay Commission to run the Riverside plant? And the new question, can we collect on some of those delinquent sewer bills and water bills? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Next item, please.
New business reports of other city officials, claims committee reports, listener Michael J. Marcello.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council President, 6:30, the city council met to discuss three claims, excuse me, one new claim and two matters under litigation, as listed on the agenda, the litigation matters being Mr. Brian Farrier versus the City of East Providence, second litigation, Gino Development versus the City of East Providence, and a new claim submitted by Richard Kirby pursuant to 4515-5 pursuant to 4246-4B. A vote taken in closed session, need not be disclosed for the period of time during which its disclosure would jeopardize any strategy, negotiation, or investigation undertaken pursuant to discussions conducted under 4246-5A, and therefore, I have nothing to report as the vote's taken.
Thank you, Mr. Senator. Next item, please.
Resolutions for vote, resolution in support of proposed legislation allowing Providence Country Day School permanent exception from taxation, sponsored by Council President Brito.
I put this on the docket this evening because I had this on the docket once before my first term while I was in office. It passed 4 to 1 at that point in time, and it decided not to put it on the last council. However, it was brought to my attention within the last several weeks about revisiting this resolution. Currently, Providence Country Day pays around $6,100 per year for their taxes. They're the only school 501(c)(3) in this city that are currently paying taxes. Now, I will go and say that Gordon School is paying some taxes, but not on the property that the school sits on. What Gordon School had did at one point in time was they purchased four homes adjacent to the school. Those homes were producing revenues for the city. And that's exactly what the taxes that Gordon School is paying on those four properties that they purchased are from homeowners. And I can understand that, and I respect that. But other than that, there are no other schools currently in this city, private or otherwise, and we know public schools don't pay any taxes. So when I looked at this and revisited this again, I said, well, why is this school the only school that will pay in taxes when they should be exempt as a 501(c)(3)? They've always been a 501(c)(3). In addition to that, I mean, their involvement in this community, which a lot of people are not aware of, and not because, and I don't only say this because my kids attend this school, but I say this because of the fact that I think it's only fear. That here you have other private schools that are not paying taxes, but yet this school is paying taxes, and they're not paying an astronomical amount, they're paying an amount that I had just given you, around, I think it's about $6,100. With that being said, they're well invested in this community. I don't know if most of you know that that catwalk or the pedestrian walk, that was once Providence Country Day, that was donated to the city, the land that the school, that the police department currently sits on right now, that was involved with a land swap from Providence Country Day. And in addition to that, it's currently being worked out with some additional land is being given to the school, excuse me, is being given to or donated, however way that's being worked out with the mayor's office, directly behind the police station, that's to make that parking lot in the back a lot bigger than what it is at this point in time. So currently, the police department goes across the street, they have vehicles that are parked behind the Rhode Island Philharmonic. And what we're looking to do is have those vehicles now bring, brought back over to the side and back, and behind the police department. So I put this on because I thought it was only fear, and again, not because my kids attend this school, but I think it's only fear that here we have a private institution that's paying taxes in this city, and many other schools are paying taxes whatsoever. And that's the reason why it's on here before, that's the reason it was on there in my first term that I was in. Unfortunately, some reason up at the State House, not that it didn't pass, it just didn't go through, at the State House, it didn't go through at that time, which was four years ago. And I want to put this through and introduce it to the council during this meeting now.
Mr. President, number one, I don't know why they wouldn't be treated like any other non-public school in the city. If the others are tax exempt, then why wouldn't PCD be? Fair is fair. I'd like to see them all pay, but if the others are not, then they should be in the same basket. And also, in addition to those items that you mentioned, they are a good neighbor to East Providence High School. They provide their lodge fieldhouse for code-red drills and for graduation ceremonies in case of inclement weather, at no cost to the city. The two departments work together, they share chairs, they set it up. And recently, maybe four times a year, they will do a shelter in place on a code-red drilling, and they make their facility available. But beyond all that, if St. Margaret's and Sacred Heart and all the other schools in the city, Bayview, I assume, if they're not paying, why should Providence Country Day? So I don't have a problem with this.
And I want to open this up for discussion. This is a resolution, it goes through one time, if I'm not mistaken. So please feel free to interject if you have some questions. I mean, I forgot all about that. Unfortunately, my mic's not working too well this evening.
Yeah, they seem to be off a little. One further thing, do we need State House involvement beyond this?
Just so you know, all the legislative delegates from the city are backing this. So yes, they are working in conjunction to pass this through the General Assembly as well.
If I may, so they pay $6,100 a year in taxes?
About that, about that. I could, let me just, go ahead, you can ask your question.
That's a question.
So one of the, looking it up online, so they sit on 22 acres of land. The buildings are all currently exempt, it's just the land parcel, except for one acre that they're being taxed on, which is 3.2 million is the assessed value of the land that they're being taxed on. So I don't know if that's probably an accurate number, 6,100?
Well, I'll get that for you right now. But it's not, it's about that. Unfortunately, I didn't, I should have just copied that down, I've got a copy of the tax bill here, but let me.
So my only other thing, and, you know, I fully support schools, I think, I don't know if, I know St. Ma, Bayview is on the list as exempt schools in the state of Rhode Island, along with some other nonprofit organizations. I don't see any of the other Catholic schools, but they could be somewhere lingering in the city's website, state's website, so I'll look that up. But in nothing against.
They'll probably run, go on the churches, that's why.
Yeah. So in nothing against you, Council President, but just for the sake of ethics, you did mention that your children go there, so would that be a conflict that you're sponsoring it?
Um, not.
Instead of like certain, somebody else could sponsor it so that there's no conflict? I didn't want that to be an issue.
Do legal representation that I had asked? No. And that's not my wife, I've asked other legal representation outside of.
Yeah, I just don't want an issue because if it's, you know.
No, and like I said, my first term on, this had passed, unfortunately, it got caught up, it got caught up somewhere at the State House, just during the wrong time, not in the sense that no one wanted to push it through, but I think it was right during the budget season, and everything else was going through during that time, and it was just overlooked. But it did get passed here 4 to 1, I remember it distinctly. It came to my attention within a couple of months ago about putting it back on, I revisited, looked into it further. And then, you know, when I started thinking about this more in particular, about how the other schools aren't paying, or 501(c)(3)'s, I should say, and not only schools, but 501(c)(3)'s, whether it's a school or otherwise.
Hospitals, Bradley Hospital.
Whatever it may be. And then I indulged into it even further, and, you know, I forgot all about the connection and relationship that they have with their, with the high school right directly across from there as well, during the commencement, and in event that something, weather permitting, I mean, they got a place automatically, their code reds, I mean, they go right over to, when they had the emergency at the high school, they were right over at Providence Country Day in their gymnasium that they have over there. So there's a lot of things that they work and do in the city, with the community, they're required to do, like the high school, X amount of hours before graduating, the students there, they do that right in the city, here in East Providence. So the students are actively involved, the administration is actively involved in this community as well. So when I really sat back and thought about all the work that they do in this community, in addition to what they have done in the past, such as donating the pedestrian, pedestrian walkover to the opposite side, so that students no longer have to walk across Pawtucket Avenue, they could just go right up over the pedestrian walkway. And then, in addition to that, the land deal that's going on right directly behind the police station at this point in time, so police vehicles now are no longer going to be stored across the street, or parked across the street in the Philharmonic parking lot behind the building, now they'll be directly behind the police department.
So, Council President, I have a couple of questions. Is, so this land question that Councilwoman Souza brought up, is that, do we know that they pay taxes on that, that three?
I don't know exactly what portion of their property that they pay taxes on. Mr. City Senator, you want to chime in here?
So I just want to clarify for the benefit of the council, and I just want to make it also clear, just because you're a 501(c)(3) does not automatically make you exempt from local property taxes. Just because you have a federal property, federal tax exemption does not make you exempt from property taxes. So under Rhode Island general law, 44-3-3, they list the following property which is exempt from taxation, there's a whole listing of them, and the, I believe the current exemption that currently implies to PCD is buildings and personal estates owned by a corporation used for schools, academy, or seminaries of learning, and, sorry, I can't read with my glasses, in any, of any incorporated public charitable institution, and the land upon which the buildings stand and immediately surrounding them to the extent not exceeding one acre. So it's the buildings that are exempt and one acre of land, okay? If it's a public school, free public school, buildings for religious worship, and the land upon which they stand and immediately surrounding them to the extent not exceeding five acres. So if you're a religious institution, you get five acres exempt. If you're, if you're not, or public preschool, you get five acres, but if you're not, you get one acre. So they're under, my hunch is, is that they're either one of those, they're either under the five acre exemption or the one acre exemption.
So to be fair, my question would be if.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I just add, can I just, I'm sorry. So that, those are general categories of exemptions that are permitted under Rhode Island law, and then what happens is city and town councils throughout the state have these particular institutions that they then petition the legislature to get added to this list. So if you look at this list, there are a number of properties that are specifically related to East Province, and I'm just going to read a couple, real and personal property located within the City of East Province, of the Columbus Club of East Province, Rhode Island charitable nonprofit corporation, real and personal property located within the City of East Province for St. Andrew's Lodge, number 39, and I think just the East Province Cape Verde Museum, and I believe St. Mary's Bayview is also listed here in its entirety.
What's that passage that's RIGL?
44-3-3, and then there's a whole bunch of, there are 50.
That gets me close enough.
Yeah, sorry, there are 64 exemptions listed into that.
Thank you.
So my question would be, so if, to be fair, if say St. Mary's, St. Bayview Academy doesn't pay for it, including land, you know, this is a big chunk of taxes. Would it be possible, if that's the case, if this could be done in a phase-out type of, you know, instead of saying, forget the 33,290,000, could we phase them out?
What do you mean by phase them out?
Like every year it gets reduced in increments?
They don't pay on their buildings now, but the tax bill is not as large as you think it is because of the exemptions that already exist. They don't pay on their buildings.
We don't, well, right now, for the sake of discussion, we don't know exactly what they're paying on the land.
Well, I got it right here. $5,729.65, and for some reason, they had an adjustment of $85.94, so the total came up to, and this is 2018, $5,643.71.
That's what they pay total in taxes? Land, buildings, everything?
Well.
They wouldn't pay on the buildings because they're already exempt.
They're exempt on that.
So that's what they pay on land.
Whatever they're paying taxes on right here, this portion was that amount in 2018. 2017 was $5,516.70.
So we're talking 5,600 total.
Just for argument's sake, I had, I had taken a look at this, but to give specifics, I didn't have the specifics at the top of my head, so I would prefer to highball than lowball.
Sure.
Well, given all the stuff that they do, and, you know, how great they are to our community, it doesn't seem like an astronomical amount of money to, you know, requiring from, you know, especially being a school who's active, they probably do a lot more in terms of value than what it is that this, the 5,600.
And even while, you know, I agree with that, but even more than that, why wouldn't they be treated like everyone else? You know, whether it's $20 or $20,000, if the other schools are, you know, being, have their taxes waived, why?
Be consistent.
Yeah, why would we not be consistent here? And along your concerns earlier, Councilwoman, I might suggest to the president, he can certainly do what he wants, but if it appears that there are at least three of us in support of this, he could certainly abstain and not worry about your involvement. One of us, you know, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, but that, you know.
Just on the side of caution, because I would hate.
Just for further discussion also, not only my kids from East Province attend there, but there are a lot of kids, believe it or not, from the City of East Province that attend that school as well. And I know that only because my kids hang out with them, so they're involved with the sports, and also, you know, being involved with the school very actively, involved with the school over there, I get to see a lot of the kids, more in particular about those kids who came from or who are from East Province. So my daughter, fortunately enough, was. So my daughter, fortunately enough, was, got accepted into Tufts University from that school. She's an East Providence student, you know, no matter how you look at it, she's an East Providence attorney here. In addition to that, just most recently, in this upcoming, past freshman year, another East Providence student got accepted into Tufts University. And I'm talking about East Providence students, not the students who come from wherever they may come from, whether it's Providence, or Narikansett, or Jamestown, I'm talking about, there's quite a few kids, believe it or not, from the city of East Providence that attend that school over there as well, and they benefit from it as well. So I'm not only looking, I'm not looking at this from a perspective, and I put my cards right on the table, everybody knows my kids go to school there, if they don't, I'm making it loud and clear that they go there, I have nothing to hide, I just think it's fear, and that's the reason why I'm bringing this up tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Did you say I should abstain?
Just a personal suggestion, it might alleviate any criticism. You vote last, so by the time Madam Clerk calls the vote to you, you'll know whether it passes or not.
I'd advance that it really doesn't matter at this point, we've all been having discussions about it.
Sure.
I don't think, you know-
I don't think it does either, but, I mean-
I'll second Mr. Morato's motion.
And I would just like to point out before we vote, that the graduate, East Providence High School who was accepting both Brown University and receiving an appointment to the Air Force Academy, we do pretty good right next door, too, but-
Amen.
I'm not, no, I'm not comparing, and you do a lot well, because if you look at two and a half years ago, that graduating class, there were multiple students that went to Ivy League schools. In fact, if I'm, the, the woman who graduated first in that class attended Yale. I mean, that, I mean, there was a number of students, and one, two, and three, if I'm not mistaken, went to Ivy League. But, I mean, again, I'm not comparing, but, you know, East Providence High School's been noted, I mean, they've always had students that always went, and I've had friends going back to the eighties who went to Ivy League schools, so that's, that's the known fact as far as I'm concerned. I was just saying it, but we're not-
Really good option.
It's just a little dig there, just take it and-
Once the new high school gets built, they'll all receive their enrollment, it'll be competition.
Yep, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second.
Yep.
Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Councilman, Council President Breyer.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you heard me the first time.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
By the way, next item, please.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to waive all local permitting fees associated with the construction of the new East Providence High School sponsored by Councilman Cahoon.
So, and I can read the resolution if you want, because it's only a few lines, but it's a fairly simple situation. So we are borrowing money to build a new school by way of the bond that we approved. Much of that money is coming by way of financing, bond financing, some of it is coming to us directly from the state, from the bond that the state took. But either way, it's essentially a loan to build the high school. Among the costs figured into building the high school, the permitting fees that go along with, or the permitting fees that would be estimated for a school of that size are not figured into the estimate. And they are not figured into the estimate because traditionally, in municipalities across the state, New England, permitting fees are not charged to their own district when they're constructing a school in their district. I think that the rationale for that is fairly obvious, but for any, for whom it is not fairly obvious, basically, you're taking, you know, think about, think about the loan as a credit card, and fees would be a cash advance on the credit card. So you could take the fees from, that you would get from that loan, but then you would be paying yourself back with interest for the money that you took out of there. So basically, what this works out to is the estimated fees associated with the construction of the high school, pardon me, I've got the number here exactly, and I'll run it down. The exact estimate is one point six million, fifty thousand, twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Again, that's an estimate based on, you know, inspections, permitting, et cetera, that would have to be done for a building of this size, three hundred and four thousand square feet. So I'm putting forward this resolution to allow the mayor to waive those fees so they are not part of the expense we have to borrow.
That's data state.
Mr. President, I think it would be foolish to take a million dollars plus from the school project, from classrooms, from the structure itself, and put it from one pocket to the other pocket in the city, to make any sense. So this is certainly, I think, most likely a legal and clerical move, and it makes nothing but sense to me. Had occasion to see one of the Gilbane inspectors who will be on this project, and he said, yeah, most cities don't charge themselves for billing permits. He said, they're already on the clock, the inspectors come in, the work will be done, the permitting is going to be done, they will make sure everything is done to code, obviously, this is just about putting the money from the left pocket to the right pocket, and in essence, it's worse than that because it would take away from the school project from saying that correctly, and-
Having to pay interest on it.
And they got to pay the interest, so it's a no-brainer to me.
So I just have a question, I'm sorry, Councilman. So the school, the project, so we'll waive local fees, permitting fees to the project, will our city's department be overseeing the inspections, or is it a private company that's doing the inspections of the facility?
No, it's a great question. And by the way, the, the school, kind of a steering committee from the building committee, and representatives from the mayor's office meet either every Wednesday or every two Wednesdays, thanks, Mike, and talk through these very things. Our, our city folks are going to be taking care of the permitting and the inspections, and that comes after some discussion with the OPM and the architect. Cities have gone both ways. There are some cities that have contracted out for those services when they felt that the requisite ability and experience wasn't there within the department. But in this particular case, given the expertise, given the support that's going to be provided by way of our OPM, you know, the group collectively has decided, okay, this is something that we can do in-house, so thereby-
So you think that, will the city believes that our building department is staffed appropriately and can take on a project of this size in the inspection of it? You mean, like, electrical plumbing? Because my concern only is, and not that I think we have a wonderful buildings inspection office, my only concern is, I know that historically, in certain projects throughout the school districts, they have not been inspected properly as they should be, and have hence led to issues with structures. So I just want to make sure with something this big, this much money, and that it's really going to be vetted by the inspectors properly so that we're not running into things down the line.
Yeah, there's a couple of different things that we have to do, because this is a ride-run project. First of all, we did have to hire that owner's project manager to oversee both the architect and the construction manager. So it's not just those folks and their expertise, there is somebody actually in place to make sure that everything is done, right? And that person, that company, Peregrine, actually reports directly to the school department, and no one else. Another thing that we have to do with the building committee, and we just, we just completed hiring this individual, we have to hire a commissioning agent, and the commissioning agent is brought in specifically to make sure that the MEP stuff, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, functions as designed. So that person gets involved early in the design, and then make sure when the building is, all the way through construction documents, all the way through actual construction, when the building is turned over, yes, this piece of, whether it be the HVAC system, the HVAC system is working exactly as it's designed, so you can feel confident in taking it over.
To code.
Yep, yep, and because we have kind of that added support, I think that had we not had to hire that added support, and you know how these projects work, probably that would have been the first thing that got cut, right? But since we have to have it, I think that that provides another level, you know, for the local folks. And again, I'm not trying to slight what they do, but as you point out, this is a hundred and eighty-nine million dollar building, and not something that they do all the time.
Right, right, okay, thank you for that.
Do I hear a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Souza to approve.
Second motion.
Resolution. Another second by Councilman Morato. Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Cahoon.
One last thing, if I may, before we vote, I'd just like to say, thank the mayor's office for paying close attention to this issue with this group, and getting all the answers, you know, before, you know, this, this resolution comes from me, but this is coming by way of the mayor's office after many conversations that are had by way of that group, so they deserve the credit for thinking about this.
Thank you, Councilman. Motion, we have a second.
I just want to add, I know historically, historically, this has been done in the city and on all the projects, I was told that there was an ordinance that allowed us to do this, I didn't find an ordinance, so in the sake of transparency, so there's our record, that's why we went with a resolution authorizing the council, to authorize the mayor to do this. So there'll be no question that this was not done behind the scenes or without authority by anybody. Again, new form of government, we want to make sure that everything's documented, and this is why we're going this route.
Thank you. Roll call, vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye.
Thank you, next item, please.
If the honorable counsel chooses to reconvene an executive session, there's just adjournment.
What is there to?
There isn't.
No need?
Mr. President?
Okay.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Roll call, vote to adjourn.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.